Have all board members joined the meeting? Mr. Coke, are you in the meeting? Ms. Pasley?
I was in, but I guess I got kicked out, so I'm good right now.
Are you in, Ms. Cappy? Dr. Green, are you in? Tammy, you're in. You're in? Okay, thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to thank everyone for being here 11:30 of 17, 5:30 PM. Board work session. First order of business, we need to appoint Ms. Cassie Holmes as the temporary board secretary.
Second.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, okay? Let's vote.
It's non-electronic. I'll do roll call until we get done. Larry?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Cappy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
It's all yours.
Okay. Ms. Holmes, are you ready? Make it take a roll call for our meeting.
Um, Larry?
Here.
Tammy?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Cappy?
Here.
Dennis?
Lori?
Here.
Here, thank you. Everyone, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for participating in that. Board members, we have our norms, and our norms are as follows. Prepare for board meetings, listen to understand, engage in purposeful discussion, collaborate respectively, make evidence-based decisions, and demonstrate professional and ethical governance. Please govern yourself accordingly. Next order of business will be approval of the agenda.
Any questions, gentlemen? Second?
We have a first and a second on the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote.
Larry?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Cappy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go to the superintendent's overview.
Thank you for everybody coming this evening. Want to provide an overview here, so you kind of have an idea as this goes through the To begin with, this isn't easy, but everything needs to be discussed, and we need to be open with it. I do want to review briefly, though, some history that Bridget had the opportunity to research prior elections, prior surveys, really going back to late 90s, early 2000s. And the same rhetoric from news articles that occurred just here recently in the November 7th election issue was the same rhetoric that occurred back in the late 90s, occurred in the early 2000s, occurred in the '09, '10 election there, and then even in the '12 election through news articles. And that was taxes too high, administrators paid excessively, cannot trust administrators, administration top-heavy, and also, obviously, the sunset clause. Somehow, some way, we've got to make sure, and continue to make sure, the truth gets out. Because in all honesty, when you take a look at the history, just for instance, the tax rates, in 1970, the operating tax levy was $3.06. Forty-seven years later, the operating tax levy is $3.06. I also have attached the assessed valuation, both on a percentage breakout and on a breakout by personal and real property itself. Wes had the opportunity, not only through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but also the local county assessor's office, LJ Hart, and the state auditor's office as well, gathered this information. And the interesting thing is that the assessed valuation barely doubles total-wise, let alone for personal property, it doesn't even double at all. So when people want to claim and say they pay too many taxes in regards to the school tax levy, that's a question that's got to be continually addressed with the public. Because it comes down to whether or not we want to support public education or not. We have to change the rhetoric. We have to continue communication, we have to continue being transparent, we have to continue being honest, and we have to continue setting our expectations. We are more transparent than we ever have been in the St. Joe's School District. I understand today more why things were suppressed in the St. Joe's School District, because who wanted to keep beating their head against the wall? Who wanted to lay themselves out there to be beat up, especially today with social And we got to continue to make sure the facts are being communicated. We have, though, today faced the reality of the situation, and we do have to become more efficient, though. That's just the nature of what occurred with the defeat November 7th. More importantly, though, I believe it's an opportunity to work together for common ground. As I mentioned in a previous meeting this week, you have to be careful, though, on what that common ground is, because the lowest common denominator could be the common ground. And that's not a good thing. The election results November 7th forces the issue. To overcome a 72% to 28% defeat with one of the largest voter turnouts in school election history, it makes you want to think. In initial feedback that we have gotten, very few people understood our plan, very few people understood the opposition plan. The majority of the people that we have talked to, and this is a lot of parents even, still were upset with four and five years ago with the FBI investigation, the $40 million, the where did it go? Somehow, some way, we've got to make sure we continue finding a way, though, to work together and convince people that we are doing a good job, we can be trusted, and the district is moving forward. It is an opportunity. It is an opportunity, because we all said, and I think Martin, you said it very well back even in August, that we had to find out. You can't go hit a home run if you don't go to the plate and try to bat. We've exposed people, we've exposed all players involved. Really, all agenda items, basically, are more on the table today than they ever have been in this school district. But the board of education's got to lead and provide decisions. You have to allow the superintendent and the staff to do their jobs, so we can get this thing moving forward. We have an opportunity. Items have been on the discussion table for many years. We talked about that at the last board meeting, from block scheduling, administrative structure, salaries, facility restructuring. You have all the information. You have a demographic study that was conducted in 2012, that's a 10-year projection to 2022. You have the BLDD updated study from 2012 that was updated in the spring of 2016. For facility restructuring, that BLDD plan and option is a very sound starting point. You have the ability to jumpstart this thing and get to the one vision that really is one of the common lowest denominators that everybody agrees on, and that is a 12 elementary system and a four middle school system. The high school scenario is a different subject. But you have to re-engage the One Vision Task Force, but you have to be able to include all parties. We need to streamline administrative structure. You have a proposal here before you tonight that saves the district over $600,000 for the 1819 school year and even sooner, beginning January 1. We need to re-establish an equitable 7-12 student schedule. Seven-period day. We need to make sure that programs outside the K-12 realm, which is our focus as a K-12 public institution, talking about early childhood to adult ed, are self-sufficient. We don't need to be in the higher ed operations. It's not that we want to do away with adult ed, but there's no reason why they can't use our facilities and we outsource running that program to an adult ed institution or a community The adult alternative school needs to continue to run under their grant, like they currently are, and where it's self-sufficient, and PAT needs to be self-sufficient under their state funding. Again, all information is available, it's been presented at many different times over the course of the last three years. You've had some of this information emailed to you in previous weeks and months, but it's time to make decisions. Some of these decisions are more time-sensitive than others. I have them listed there. We need to have decisions by December 11th on a direction that you want us to take on a facilities plan. Block scheduling needs to have a final decision by December 11th. Steps, movement, and/or a freeze needs to have a decision by December 11th. Administrative reorganization needs to have a decision by December 11th. Health benefit plan, we actually have a meeting this coming next week with Blue Cross Blue Shield and JW Terrell, our insurance broker. We hope to have numbers and recommendations to where district contribution can be adjusted, that it will not change any contribution or the plan design that we currently have for employees, but yet will be a savings. The Hilliard Adult Education Program, we need a direction by December 11th. Do you want us to pursue that or not? Extracurricular, we need a direction by the 11th. A lot of these other items that could be possibly looked at and discussed, we have a little bit more time. I wouldn't stretch it out very far, that's why I put that January 22 deadline, particularly if you determine to close any buildings. We do, again, have an opportunity here tonight. There's no decisions tonight, but we would like to provide or have some consensus direction leading up to December 11th, though. I appreciate everybody's hard work. We actually, as directors, back in July, met as a team, and this was still with the if, if the revenue issue would even be placed on a ballot. And at that time, I told the directors that you have Plan A if it passes and Plan B if it doesn't. So in the background, they have been working, really, for the last five months on Plan We just don't sit there in our offices and do nothing. It has been presented to St. Joe United, and I'm sure Dr. Kraus will even present some of those thoughts coming out of St. Joe United here tonight. So with that in mind, Mr. Rucker, I'll turn it over to Dr. Kraus.
Dr. Kraus, take the floor.
All right, I think in your, in the board documents, there was a spreadsheet posted. I'm having Cassie bring around a more recent update, and I'll show you very, there's only one change to it, but as soon as you get it, I'll bring that up. On the spreadsheet that was in the board packet, if you look over at the column in the middle that says potential savings and go down six lines, you'll see that under administrative cuts, it indicated $615,950. On the most recent one that you were just handed, if you follow to that same line, it says $505,950. That's a difference of $110,000. If you look about another 10 lines down in that same middle column, you'll see where that $110,000 is. It says eliminate adult programs at Hilliard Technical Center, and I will explain that more in a little bit, but the $110,000 is the reduction of an administrative position. And so when you take that 110 and add it to the 605,950 above, that's where the 615,950 figure came from. But I thought it would be a little clearer to break it out in this manner. So those are the only changes to that spreadsheet. And since in the original one, that $110,000 was duplicated, you'll see that the total over on the right-hand column went from 9442 to 9332. And so that is the $110,000 difference. Any questions on that? Okay. All right. You know, this has been a very challenging and emotional time for this community and everyone in it, and I want to recognize that right offhand. You know, I've been in education, this is year 36, and this is about the fourth time where I've had to negotiate through, you know, a severe budget issue, and it's never easy. And I want to thank all of you who volunteer your time and get paid absolutely nothing for the tough decisions that you have to make, and I recognize the position that puts you in. As Dr. Newhart said, I do believe, and we've been talking about this for months, as he said, what do we do if the levy doesn't pass? Well, now that's the position that we find ourselves in. We do need a real clear direction on those items that he mentioned, and a lot of them are very time-sensitive, so hopefully you can give us a kind of a consensus on direction on some of those tonight with some final votes on December 11th. One of the things I want to emphasize, people wouldn't be human if they weren't having some angst if you're a school district employee at this point, unless they know they're going to retire, I guess. What I, I firmly believe that it's very possible that very few, if any, people will need to be riffed or suffer through a reduction in force based on anything here that we want to do. If you look at the yellow section of the spreadsheet, those numbers there in yellow talk about last year, these are the, these are numbers from last year. Last year, we had 34 teachers that retired, and we figured an average savings of $60,000 for each of them. Now, you have to remember that $60,000 is not all salary. It's salary, it's approximately $8,400 in contribution toward health insurance, and it's 14.5% toward retirement for all certified teachers. It also, the less people you have, the lower your workers' compensation insurance is. There are a number of factors that go into that. And I do believe that that $60,000 is a very conservative estimate. It's probably several thousand dollars higher than that. But even at $60,000, if none of the people that we assume will retire were not replaced, that'd be over $2 million. Additionally, last year, we had 85 teachers who resigned and went elsewhere for a variety of reasons. A lot of those teachers were not at retirement stage, so their average salary obviously was not as high, but I think it's a very conservative estimate, again, to say $48,000 for those, times 85 is a little over $4 million. With our classified staff, we had 20 that retired, approximately $33,000 each for $660,000, and resigning classified staff, 35, at $24,000 each, so $840,000. And I think fairly conservatively, that would be over $7.5 million. The numbers that have been bandied around the most are if you decide to freeze salaries, we would need to cut about $7 million. If you opt to give step and movement, that is all shown in the red right below there, and I want to address that next. Assuming 870 teachers, a step cost about $750,000. That was last, for this current year. Step for classified staff was $515,000. Horizontal movement, there were 88 people who moved last year, that's, for instance, from bachelors to bachelors plus 16, or bachelors plus 16 to masters, whatever it might be. On the average, that costs about $1600 a person, or $140,000. Step for administrators, for 86 administrators, was $111,000. That's a total of $1.516 million. So there are the difference from, if you freeze, that's why we're figuring $7 million. If you opt to give step, adds a million and a half, and that's where the $8.5 million figure comes from. Any questions so far? Okay. I do want to, well, first of all, I want to, from you guys, how much detail do you want? I'd like to go through, if you'll go to the top of the spreadsheet there. I would like to go through briefly each of those items and tell you where those numbers came from, if you feel like that would be helpful to you. Okay. Obviously, all of you have been involved in this school district and in this community longer than I have. I've only been here a little over a year and a half. But in every community, schools have a useful age span, just like people. Buildings die after a while. Closing schools has been on the radar for a long, long time, far before I got here, far before Dr. Newhart was here, or the vast majority of you. We believe that it would save approximately $2 million to close a school. And we're suggesting that two schools might be proper in this case to save about $4 million. Now, I want to, again, make clear that when a school is closed, that doesn't mean that every employee in that building no longer has a job. We would come down to the yellow area and say, well, we had, and some of them probably will resign or retire. I mean, it happens in every building. I don't think we've ever had a building where nobody left. So if someone resigns or retires in other buildings, their salaries would go into the total savings, and the people in the buildings that were closed would transfer to other places. It doesn't mean that those people would lose their jobs, whether they were certified or classified. The schools on the list, as I understand it, and we believe it would make the most sense to close elementary schools because of the groundwork that's been done to lead toward either a 12-4-3 setting or a 12-4-2, whatever that happens to be. Excuse me, I need to get to my notes now. The schools that we are suggesting to close, and again, remember this is a suggestion, hopefully I won't get hit by any fruit by anyone in the audience, the elementaries, as I understand it, that have been on the list are Humboldt, Lake, Hyde, or I'm sorry, yeah, Hyde and Edison. We believe it would make the most sense because of age of schools, cost to run the buildings, those types of things, and the easier ease of redistricting if we looked at Humboldt and Lake, if you want to do two. Humboldt students, we feel like could fairly easily be transitioned to Lindbergh, and Lake students to Hosea. In both of those cases, it would require some mobile units to be put up to assess the overflow. Any questions on that or any more information that you would like? Yes?
On the, on the savings here, does that figure in the cost of the mobile units and the transitioning?
Yes, it does. We figured that the potential savings from each building would be about 2.5 million, in that we would have about $500,000 in additional costs for mobile units to place them, those types of things.
Mr. Snead?
Lake Contrary is not an old school. It's a fairly new school compared to the others, just for the record.
Right, thank you. Dr. Green, did you have a question?
Yeah. Do you have a worksheet available where those tallies, how rock-solid are those numbers, and would we have the ability to look and make sure that those numbers are?
Absolutely.
Fairly accurate?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Wes could get you that information down to the dollar, pretty much. I think it's in the budget book, in fact, isn't it, Wes?
Yeah, all this information's broke down in the budget books. It's in several different areas to add them up. We have it broke down by salaries, benefits, and also supplies, purchase services, those kind of things. They're in two different areas. If you add those two numbers together for those buildings, you'll get pretty close to that. The only number that's not included in those numbers would be the all-district staff, which would be like food service, maintenance, transportation, which those costs, we would assume, would transfer to the buildings. Some of those will.
Okay.
Wes, what is the operational cost on an average on these elementary buildings?
It's right on 2.5 million.
No, just one, say, just take an average cost of one elementary building for electrical, heating, plumbing, what does it cost to run one? On the operational cost?
On the operational costs, it's right around $300,000 to $400,000 a year, just on operational. That's non-classroom. That's operational. Does that understand that? That would be not including teachers, paros, anything that directly affects the kids. It would be your maintenance, your food service, let me discuss this earlier.
Utilities, insurance.
Insurance, supplies, those kind of things.
Mr. Snead?
Do you have a plan of where these kids are going to go if you close these two schools? Would they go to the closest school next to them?
Well, in order, in order to avoid having to redistrict multiple times and move kids multiple times, the thought that was Humboldt's students would all go to Lindbergh because they would feed the same middle school, and that those from Lake would go to Hyde. Hosea, Hosea, I'm sorry.
Okay. And then I noticed those schools, you mentioned three of the four, some of the poorest kids in town, low-income, single-parent families. That's always a problem with me, you know? It's amazing we never mention any schools that have, like, upper income, that, you know? It becomes a problem. It becomes a problem with some folks, especially me, when, when it looks like the poor and needy are the ones that pay the price. Just a thought.
Those, those schools, very, very plainly, Mr. Sneeden, were developed, were just taken right from the existing plan that we had. Any other questions on that topic? Okay, reducing the district contribution to health insurance. Currently, the district puts $692.80 per month toward health insurance costs for every employee who's on our plan. If we went with a reduction, the district would cut out $100 per month, or donate $592.80, or $592.80. Right now, we have 1,124 employees on the insurance. Knowing that we're going to have less total employees, last year, I based this figure on 1,050, that would save $105,000 per month for accumulated savings of $1,260,000. I do want to say right up front that this would have to be a one-year fix. We could not sustain it for longer than that without jeopardizing our insurance reserves. If I understood Wes correctly, and if I get the numbers wrong, correct me here, Wes. Currently, we have about a 40% reserve in our insurance fund, which is a very, very good problem to have. Our move towards self-funding has gone very, very well so far, and our reserves are in really good shape. JW Terrell and others that we've talked to, that Wes talked to, had said that 15% to 20% was typical for reserve balances, so that gives us a significant amount of money, and we could take $1,260,000 out of that on a one-time basis and still feel like our insurance reserves were significant enough to keep us solvent in that area. This would have very, very minimal effects on any employee. If they don't have, take our insurance, it would have zero impact. The premium would stay the same, the plan stays exactly the same, the employee would see no change, other than there would be $1,200 a year less reported as income for them to their particular retirement system, whether it be PERS or PSRS. Now, would that have a long-term effect on them? If they're planning to use next year as one of their three highest years, it would have an effect on them. And the effect would be $26.67 per month in their retirement stipend for the, for the rest of their life. So it's a $340. Okay? So is there a potential effect? Yes. If anybody was using those last, as one of their three highest years, there would be a minimal effect.
Dr. Press, I have a question on that. At United SGA, Stephen, we talked about, we talked about a $50 instead of $100.
We had, we talked about both of them. $50 had a significant amount of, of support as well. We chose, I chose, we chose, there was a group of us involved in this decision, that this can be done, it's a significant amount of money, and it doesn't cost anybody a job or keep us from rehiring a position. And so we feel like on a one-year basis, this would be better. If you choose to reduce district contribution, you could do any amount you wanted. You could do 75, you could do 50, you could do 25. We wouldn't, definitely not recommend over 100, because that would, that would stress our reserve balance.
Also, just to clarify, when you said a retirement stipend, that's paid by the Missouri Public School Retirement System?
Yes.
That is not a stipend paid by the St. Joseph's School District?
Correct. That would be what the payout they get from PERS or PSRS.
Thank you.
And you said that this is just a one-year?
We would only be able to sustain that amount of withdrawal from our insurance reserves without getting critically low, and maybe not being able to cover our expenses.
And another thought bouncing off of what Lori said, if we did the 50, then we could sustain it for two years if we had to. Is that correct or not correct?
Potentially.
Okay. Which may be something to consider, because we don't know when we're going to introduce the possibility for another revenue, you know, initiative for the ballot. So maybe we want to be conservative and spread it over two years.
But the $100 saves jobs. If you do $100 instead of the 50, you save, potentially save $500,000 worth of salaries, which would be about 10 teachers. That's, that's, that's the way we looked at it as administration.
That makes.
Where we're trying to figure a way to try to save as many staff members as we possibly can.
I would feel much more comfortable doing the $100 than finding that we could save.
And we, we will evaluate our health insurance every year anyway, because we are self-insured. So we'll keep, we'll keep tabs on it, we'll have a quarterly report, we'll, we'll present to the board, and we will keep very close tabs on this. So in next year, we may not have to increase it back up $100, maybe only do 50, as long as our, our claims rate stays steady.
Nobody gets sick.
Nobody gets sick, or if we just don't have a lot of hard, high claims, we should still be okay even to carry it forward into the future.
Well, I'm glad that you clarified that, because honestly, that makes a huge difference.
Dr. Green, you look like you have a question.
A, a side conversation over here jogged a question for me. If we, I'll hold this question until you've done talking about the insurance premium itself, because this is going back to closing the two schools.
Okay. Any other questions about possible reduction by the, in the health contribution? Okay. Dr. Green, did you want to go back to the?
Thank you. So closing the two schools, you've got a $4 million figure here for two schools. That includes how many FTE staff positions in that figure? Because it sounds like the operational cost we would save is just a small fraction of the $4 million. So how many FTEs are we looking at?
Any other questions before we move to the next one?
If you did close Hyde and Lake, where, where would the Hyde kids go? No, 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 I know you said two, but I heard you mention Lake and Hyde in the four you're talking about.
Those were the four that were mentioned in the study.
Where would the Hyde kids go?
We're not suggesting closing Hyde as well for that very reason. There would need to be some intermediate steps in there to, to either.
I don't like closing any of them, but Hyde's building's worse than Lake Contrary's building. But my problem is, you couldn't put Hyde and Lake in Hosea.
That's correct.
That's impossible. So you can't list Hyde or Lake with four, the four schools that you were.
But he wasn't proposing.
I know you're not proposing, but I heard you say there was four schools, and I heard Hyde in there and Lake both.
That came from the BLDD study that was done, previous to.
Of course. But I'm just, I'm just throwing that around, I just didn't.
You're arguing against something he's not proposing.
No, I'm not arguing. I just said it's impossible.
I think what he's getting at is you're closing two schools in close proximity, and so where are you going to send those kids?
Well, that was my other question. If you, if you closed more than two schools, it would require modulars at other locations.
But we're not closing two in close vicinity, because the two proposed are Humboldt and the North End, and Lake and the South End.
Now, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, that's what we're proposing.
But the, the schools that he mentioned.
I'm going to ask you more questions here, because the other, well, I, I won't say that right now, but I'm waiting. Thank you.
Question. If my figures are right on the BLDD study, that Field, Gene Field is one of the higher maintenance costs, higher cost per square foot schools. And I know Oak Grove has additional capacity that's available. Is there any thought about doing anything up in the northeast part of town?
We really did not investigate anything that wasn't mentioned in the previously done studies.
Okay. That could be on the table.
Anything else before we move to the next topic? All right, the next one is switching to high schools to a seven-period day, and that really goes hand in hand with one a little farther down, eliminating the team planning hour at the middle schools. The idea is that for equity and to have a better, more equitable distribution of courses at all of our secondary buildings, to move all of them to seven-period days. We already have a couple of middle schools that are seven-hour, a couple that are not. All of our high schools are four-by-two block, and we're suggesting that all of those be moved to seven-period days. Resolving savings in, at the high school level is about $1.25 million, and approximately $600,000 at the middle schools, and that would be shrinking each of the staffs by attrition. And there would probably need to be some reshuffling from school to school there as well. Any questions on that?
I do have one. In between our last meeting and this meeting, I have visited with some secondary people that said to me, okay, I understand maybe eliminating block scheduling, but have we considered going to eight periods rather than seven, which would still leave, you know, it would still be a reduction in staff costs or savings costs, but also then leave opportunity for more electives? And so I just, maybe to Dr. Hubbuck, is, was that thought of or discussed, or? I don't remember eight periods being mentioned, but that doesn't mean it wasn't.
Sure. You know, the real elephant in the room is that we're overstaffed at the secondary level at pretty remarkable rates.
We looked at a sample of 67 Missouri high schools that have a range between the enrollment of Benton High School all the way up to Central. So from about 715 students all the way up to in excess of 1,645. And what we found, there were 27 high schools that were running a four-by-four block, very similar to ours. 24 of those high schools ran a seven-period schedule, and then 16 ran an eight. One of the tremendous downsides of an eight is 45-minute class periods. There's really no way to get around that. Makes it also very difficult to plan lunches. In addition to that, as you can see on the chart there, the, the average ratio of students to teachers of those 27 school district, or high schools that were operating a four-by-four was 15.4 students for every one teacher. In, in our district, we're considerably lower than that. So we're at 13.4 compared to the average from that comparison set of 15.4. In terms of equity across the district, at Central, it's 14.1, Lafayette 13.6, and Benton On the second page, there's also some comparisons between, so for similar enrollments, what would you expect to see in terms of the ratio there? So for the, the first sample, for Central High School, for the comparison set, you would expect to see about an average of 16.4. And again, Central was at 14.1. So the average of the, of that comparison set, and that also includes Central, would be 101, as far as FTEs at the high school level, for high schools of the size of Central. Central is at 116. So when you look at Table 4, this would be the comparison set for Lafayette and for Benton, and the comparison average would be 14.8. And, and again, I mentioned it was about 13.6 and 11.9. So really, a lot of this is driven by the open enrollment, by the boundaries as well at the middle school level, because that's what we definitely see at the middle school level, where you have two buildings, one solidly, consistently over 500 students, one nearly at 500, and then two middle schools, the north side and the south side, that are about 344 and 377 students. Which, again, makes it very difficult to ensure that every child in St. Joseph has a very similar experience at the middle school level. So in terms of, do we consider an eight block? Not really. Not, not when you look at, if we're, if we're going to drive toward efficiency, this is what we looked at. And, and I'd also shared a document earlier this month about the course offerings in general, using Central High School as the template for that. There's two districts that are very, two high schools very similar. So Raytown High School, and the other one would be Liberty, that are both operating off of a seven-period schedule, and there's ample course opportunities. When you compared those three high schools, what you saw was a difference of about 20 or so extra course offerings at Central High School compared to Liberty High School and Raytown High School.
Central had more or less?
Far more.
More?
Which, again, is great if, if we can afford that, but I, I think one of the challenges with maintaining eight, maintaining that level of staffing, is that you have a class right now in Project Lead the Way, computer science, that has five students in it, that meets for 90 minutes every other day. So that's what's driving, so I know a lot of our teachers are saying, I've got a lot more than five kids in my class. You're right. But when we permit classes to make that have relatively low numbers, it creates that inequity.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Hubbuck?
Yes?
We had this conversation before, too. Can you tell me a little bit about the, the effects of the education experience? I mean, so we got, what, 90 minutes in the block scheduling? But in the seventh, you got 50 every day?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct? And so, I know you sent us some information on that, and I don't, I didn't get it, I apologize, I didn't get a chance to read it all. What's the, which one's better as far as getting our students where they need to go to prepare for the next level?
Well, I can shoot from the hip, but let me grab my laptop.
Okay.
I know that's not a great answer, but last, on the 13th, in the presentation I shared, essentially it breaks down, what does the data tell us about, how does a schedule impact student learning? Typically, one of the, the great benefits of a seven-period day, or even an eight-period day, is the frequency, the repetition that you have with the course content. You do lose a lot on a four-by-four block schedule. 90 minutes is a very long time period for class periods or schoolwork meetings, you know? It's an awful long time. So by its nature, it really does depend. The schedule, the study that looked at free and reduced lunch rates, enrollment size, one of, one of the, one of the findings, and that was from January, indicated that for school districts that have a relatively high level of free and reduced lunch, it is probably more optimal to be running off of either a seven or an eight-period day schedule in terms of attendance and student achievement.
I knew that we, you had presented some of that, but I just wanted to make sure that, that that part was brought out. Above the seven, at least appears to be the better for the students and the learning process. Any more questions, Dr. Hubbuck? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the list, on the most recent one that you have, we've talked about the team plan, or the, moving to a seven-period day at the middle school. Most of the questions, I, I think, have been answered about that, is that correct? Okay. Administrative cuts is the next one on there. Total of 5,000, 5,950, plus what potentially could be saved if we eliminate one administrator at Hilliard. Four of the, that involves, that figure involves six cuts. Four of those basically have already been done. Two director positions that are not going to be replaced, the coordinator of federal programs, that we're going to absorb the duties into other administrative positions, and a supervisor position from the operations department. The other two would, I
The other two would identify specific individuals, and we'll discuss those two with you in executive session, that would get us to the 600-plus thousand-dollar figure. Any questions for me that I can answer in open session? All right. Moving down the list, eliminating the PTO buyback. I think last year, people who retired last year at the end of the 16, 17 year were the first people who benefited from the increased buyback in policy GCBDA and GDBDA. Basically, if you were to eliminate that, it would save approximately $330,000 based on the number of people who retired last year. That's going to fluctuate a little from year to year, but that would be, if there were no buyback given at all. One of the things that just dawned on me today as I was going over this for the 83rd time, was that probably a more accurate figure, if you went back to selling, or purchasing the days back for $20 a day, which is what anybody who has more than 100 days banked now would get for those additional over 120, you would see really an 80% savings of that $330,000, which would amount to 264. That would be if you went back to the selling all days, or buying all days back at $20 per day. Questions on that, or the philosophy behind that?
Doctor, if I may, Dr. Kraus, and Wes too, I had these questions this morning, I think I talked to you earlier too on it. This is still in effect though, for this current year, for somebody to obtain their buyback for January payment of 18. So truthfully, it would actually be a savings for the 18, excuse me, for the 19, 20 school year.
That is correct, because it's in effect as of this year. You wouldn't see these savings immediately, it would be the second year. Because we would pay these out, everybody retires this year or leaves this year, would be paid out in 1890.
And we would have to redo our policy.
Well, no, if you redo the policy now, it won't affect the people that are retiring by June 30th of this year, because it'll be paid next year. But you'd have to redo the policy now, because if you redo the policy next year, then it pushes it another year. Because we're deferred, I guess it's deferred, because we pay it the following year.
But the point is, is that if we decide to do this, that we have to go back and we have to make that change in our policy.
Policy, correct.
Dr. Green?
So, based on that then, if the choice was made to eliminate PTO, would you anticipate more retirements this year, and therefore, a greater PTO buyback?
Potentially, yes. I would assume, so.
But is the district interested in that incentive to encourage retirements?
Twofold. When it was implemented, was exactly that, to create a retirement additional incentive, but also more importantly, it was an encouragement not to use sick days.
To increase attendance.
To increase, you know, teacher attendance, and also to reward teachers that were there every day. So it was a twofold process or reasoning why the increase in implementation. But yes, I do believe it would, the people that are in those retirement years might look at that and say, yeah, instead of waiting a year, I might get out this year. That's going to be just, I mean, individual basis, but I would think it would make someone consider it.
We had questions. I mean, we already had clients about it. I know my department has.
Yes, we have as well.
And this question would be for other board members. What are some of the feedback you're getting regarding this line item?
I haven't received any, but I do have a question to go along with what you're talking about. The question is, are you proposing eliminating it totally, or are you proposing to go to the $20?
We had talked earlier about just eliminating it. In my mind, it would make more sense to go back to the previous and buy them back for 20. And that's just my opinion, I've not discussed that with anyone else.
And leaving, and leaving the total number of days alone that you could accumulate?
Yes.
So it knocks it down, you said, to like 80% savings as opposed to?
Yes, if you, well, the vast majority of our retirees have been here long enough that they're going to be paid out at the $100 per day rate. And if you go back to the 20, that would be a savings of 80%. And the 100% number was the 330, 80% of that is 264.
264. Okay. Dr. Green, did you have some more to add to that?
I think my, I think my original question was, what kind of feedback are we hearing?
I haven't had any.
Okay. I'll ask a follow-up question then. I assume this was, this policy was put in place for a reason, and I can imagine some of the reasons. Do we see that this would affect those reasons that we put it in place?
I think so, and I think that we were very diligent when we were looking at that, and those incentives to, because, when you get to the end of retirement, and if you've been around long enough, a lot of people when they're close to retirement, if they're only going to get $20 a day, quite frankly, they would rather take that day off and have just a day, because it benefits them more. If we're putting this incentive in place, then we've actually incentivized them to being at school, and we know that that's the best for our kids.
Well, and when you have someone who's very dedicated and is always there, it's a reward for them as well.
Right. So it was a benefit for those employees, an incentive at the same time.
And we landed on the $100 for the top fee, because that's about what it costs us to bring in a sub for the day. So it's kind of a wash, but we would rather have, and this administration, I'm sure we agree to this, we'd rather have our teachers in the classroom than a sub. So that's kind of where we came up with this when we started. So I mean, that's the premise behind it.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, I know we have a very dedicated staff anyway. Have we seen fruits of our labor on this? I mean, has it, has it done us any good?
That's kind of hard to answer, because it's a relatively new policy. We've only had one full year. Total staff attendance last year was no better than it was in 15, 16. So that's hard to, hard to say.
The way you'd, the way you'd have to really look at it is over several years, and you would have to look at the people that were getting ready to retire at the time, and see if they had excessive absenteeism in the last two or three years before they left. You would have to do a lot more research to determine, and then look at the people that retired last year and see what their absentee, you see, you follow what I'm trying to say?
I know exactly what you're saying. I was just curious if we saw any.
It's hard to say right now.
Significant change.
You know, and this, there's nothing on this list that's a good idea. I mean.
No, I was just, since we were talking about it, that's why I just thought.
Right. And the reason that some of these, these things are on here is that they potentially can either save someone's job, or increase the number of people we can hire back. If you look at 330,000, that could be another six, seven, eight staff people, that we could either rehire or bring back new to replace. So that's, that's why the item is on there.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Any other questions on that item? All right, operating PAT on the state funding only. Right now, the district subsidizes or contributes about $230,000 beyond what's raised by the visits that the parents as teachers folks do. It's fairly, fairly common, I believe, for PATs to be asked to operate within the amount of money that they raise, and so that's, that's what we are suggesting would be the purpose of cutting it back to the state funding only.
I have a question on that. Everybody knows how I feel about the early intervention with the kids. Parents as teachers in early childhood preschool, to me, that's building the strongest foundation that we can for the success of our students long-term. Having said that, there are certain obligations or activities that parents as teachers have to provide in order to meet their expectations from the state levels. And that's like having different playdates and learning experiences and things like that. How do we still be able to afford those things if we're not contributing to that as a district? Because I'm not sure that they would be able to sustain those without us being able to kick in them.
Because the real story is, is the reason that we contribute to parents as teachers is because the state stopped funding it.
Right, they cut back some years ago.
They've cut it several times.
Well, and I've talked with Deb Koontz about this particular situation, that, because we have talked many times about how the state has cut back, leaving this gap that the district has filled in over the years. And she says that, especially in comparable districts of our type, that there's 30 to 60% funding from the school districts today, which might not have been the case back when the funding was a bit better from the state. So it's not so common anymore for them to operate within just the state monies. So I'm kind of with Lori on this one. We have so many at-risk children, that preparing them better to begin gives us the largest leg up for the least investment at that point.
Well, and anytime that you do any kind of research, every dollar that you put in, you get that four times back in the long term. So I don't, I don't want to shoot off our foot to save our hand, I guess, or something like that. Because what I'm saying is, is that I fully believe in building a strong foundation, and that is what is going to benefit us as a district and these children in their lives as they come through. And the more kids that we can touch, the better off they're going to be as they transition through elementary, then through middle, and then through high school. And if we take away that, I'm afraid that we're taking away opportunities for those kids that are at the most need. And I just think that in the long run, it's just, it's going to hurt them, and it's going to hurt us.
It's going to add to some special services. A lot of the parents as teachers, a lot of what they do is to evaluate children at a very young age, and get them into programs right away, which gets them in a better situation so that by the time they're in school, they maybe don't need some of the special services that they do end up needing. Gosh, look at her nodding over there, yes.
Dr. Kraus?
Yeah, because you catch it, and you can address it before you even get into school.
Dr. Kraus, I understand how parents as teachers works. Could you tell me what the 230,000 that you're just proposing to take, what does it do to the program we have now?
Mr. Eckler, I'm not an expert on parents as teachers, I make no claim to be. We do have two people in the room who are though, so I'm going to defer to one of them to try and answer that.
Do you have the data, Ms. Flowers and Ms. Burser? Can you tell us what the 230 reduction does to your program?
I just want to start by saying I agree with everything that you're saying. Parents as teachers does a great service to our community. Early childhood is the biggest investment that you can make in a community with the biggest returns. I don't disagree with any of that, but at the same time, we realize that as part of the district, no one's going to be left out of the burn of this election results. No one is above cuts, and we have to look at all programming to ensure that we're making the best decisions. I've spoke several times with Debbie Koontz, and she's worked on some budget projections for me, and shared those with me, so this is not my work. I want to make sure that that's known, she's worked very hard on this. Currently, we run an exemplary model in St. Joe for parents as teachers, which means that we go above and beyond what the state requirements are. So there are some places that we can cut back. You mentioned that there were several things that were required to do by the state. There's different, there's different levels of requirements. There's levels of requirements for affiliation, and then non-affiliate programs. And so we would have to weigh the importance of whether or not we want to maintain affiliate status. If not, there are different reductions that we could make. For example, just one thing is the monthly visits that you, the parent nights that you were suggesting. Those are only required by the state once a month, and we do several other ones. And we do, in an effort to meet diverse populations, and we have lots of smaller groups that meet. If we wanted to cut dollars, we could certainly start by reducing some of those opportunities, which again, we don't want to eliminate anything on this list, but we want to reduce, choose things that have the least amount of impact. Also, the 230,000, I didn't put this piece together, so I'm not sure if that includes, what that includes exactly, but from the projections that she gave me, she, Debbie ensured me that the largest amount of our budget is spent on salaries, as it is for the entire district. And we currently have seven full-time employees, which comes with a large package of benefits along with that. And so by reducing full-time employee status to part-time, it's going to have a significant savings. The first question I asked, one of the first questions I asked her was that, would that affect our revenue? If we reduced the amount of time that our parent educators are able to work, would that reduce the amount of revenue that came in? And she said the last couple of times that we have had to reduce parent educator staff to part-time, that there was no change in revenue. And so that was interesting to me, but with that, I think, I think the reasoning behind that is because you have to cut all of those other things that you're doing. So the only thing that parent educators would be doing is their monthly required group meetings and their, their home visits, which is what, home visits and screenings are reimbursable. So if we're not spending our time on the extraneous things, we get more, we get our visits done, and then there was not a reduction in, in revenue. I, again, I'm not the parents as teachers expert. I support the program fully, but that's my knowledge of the reductions that were suggested.
Are we suggesting seven part-time then, as opposed to cutting anyone out altogether?
I don't think there was a plan for a reduction in parent educators, no.
Okay, so, so all seven would probably go to part-time.
And that means their benefits are no longer paid out because they're part-time, so that's probably.
I understand that, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone was still going to be employed.
That's my understanding.
Pardon?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
No parent educators.
Yeah, I would just want to mention a couple of things. First of all, this retired educator is never going to say, do away with parents as, parents as teachers, that's not going to happen. At the same time, that's not what we're saying, and that's kind of what I was hearing here, is all that they do, and all we're not talking about eliminating the program.
Absolutely.
We're talking about having them work within the means of what's funded by the state, which is very, very, very common for school districts to do. And I have been in some, involved in some conversations about, I know we just went to full-time people, which is always better, not that long ago, but I've been involved in conversations where we could go to part-time and possibly hire more part-time people, so we might be able to service a few more kids. Granted, we're just talking about home visits, we're not talking about all the fluff, which the fluff is good, but not when you're in a budget crunch like we are. And so I just, you know, wanted to throw that out there, there's, you know, that opportunity. Now, we would have to be responsible as a district to say, okay, we're going to cut these full-time positions, we're going to go to part-time, we're going to add more parents as, as teachers educators, and, and we'd have to follow through with that. Because I know oftentimes, once cuts are made, no one follows through with making sure we add more staff, but just wanted to say that.
I don't think, I don't think we're talking about adding more staff, we're just talking about the reduction.
You could add more part-time for what it's costing us to do the seven full-time.
But then you're not saving any money if you add more staff.
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
Okay, what Tammy was saying, because they're full-time people, we pay for their benefits.
Right, I understand that.
You actually can hire more staff, because the way PAT is reimbursed is on the per visits.
Yes.
So if you keep them under the benefit amount, you're actually going to be able to see more kids. You're not going to hurt the program any, because you hire more part-time staff. It's unfortunate that the benefits is what's driving the issue here.
Yeah.
Because it does, it's going to be harder to find part-time staff, a lot of smaller districts.
Well, why don't we do that with our whole staff? Why don't we have all part-time teachers then?
Because teachers, it's not funded by a special source.
But we could, you know, we'd save so much money.
But it's not funded with a specific source.
Well, it's not the right thing to do either.
Currently, right now, and I commend Debbie Koontz and the PAT staff for what they've done. done, because if you recall, the members of the board that were here in the fall and spring of 1516, they were assigned a task to operate with a 36% net, based on their site visits. They exceeded that this past year, and in fact, our contribution, because they increased their visits, was more. Because the 36% net, because they went to more visits, had more revenue come in, as that increased, 36%, for instance, of a million dollars, is more than 36% of $500,000. So this needs to be taken a hard look at. If anything, you have to cap your total dollars so you know exactly what your net difference is, to where if you want to contribute locally, it's only at, you know, $50,000 or $100,000, so that doesn't increase. Or you operate under your state funding. And there's a lot of districts, when the categorical programs, and people in education know this, common public does not, when they say they increase the state foundation formula, that's a misnomer.
Yes, it is.
Because they lowered the state advocacy target. And then they've lowered categorical programs like transportation, like PAT tremendously over the years. Transportation, for instance, used to be, you know, paid, what, 70%, 72% reimbursement rate? And today, what is it?
Nineteen.
19, 18%.
Yeah.
And there's a difference there that is just not understood by, you know, general public.
But they can say they fully funded it.
The PAT program, all of us agree, it does a tremendous job. I don't want to take that away from them. I fully understand that. But again, this goes back to what our primary focus and purpose is, a K-12 institution. That's what the state basically requires us to do. And where do you want your money to go? That's the philosophical difference.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. Any more questions?
I'll offer one more.
One more question?
Sure. I don't know that it was clear to me, the added benefit we're getting with that $230, just based on the conversation tonight. Anyone can fill me in on that.
The savings was in, mostly in benefits.
What is the value we're getting out of that extra?
Two hundred and thirty.
The extra $230.
Jobs would that save?
No.
No, just, how does it benefit the kids? How does it benefit the community?
It gives the PAT, gives those teachers opportunity to do more for the students that they're trying to reach.
Well, the parents' teachers program in general is helping parents to teach the children so that they are better prepared when they come ready for kindergarten and preschool, some of them. And there are programs that some kids qualify for that are special needs, first steps, and I don't know all of them. There are several programs that are for kids that are struggling or have a, some kind of way that they're back from their peers, where they can get caught up earlier, so they aren't hitting kindergarten several years without any intervention at all. That's the word I wanted. And so what it does, it saves the district money in the long run, because we are getting those kids up to speed earlier and not hitting a big lurch when they come to school. So it makes it go better for not only the children, but also the teachers and everybody as they come in. And then we have higher scores from children later as they progress well through their future in school.
And the thing of it is, is that the data supports that if a student comes in that's not ready for kindergarten, if they are not caught up by the third grade, they may never catch up. So that's why, for me, the foundation is the most important part of what we do in this district.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
One thing that's not been said is, parents' teachers, parents are involved, and I think that's a big plus to this program, because we need more parent involvement with all of our students. So I see this as a two-pronged attack to take care of the students and to take care of the parents, number one. Number two, I understand this is housed at the Keighley Center. Is that right? Is that the only program we have that's housed at the Keighley Center?
No.
Okay, that's a building that's not on the list anyplace. The BLDD did not mention that building, so I'd like to see us take a look at that building and the cost of operating that, and maybe see if it's feasible to make some shift there. I don't have any figures, it's just this building I think we need to take a look at. It's in use and service for that very reason, for the number of programs they offer the parents and kids to come in, and the meeting rooms, and the...
That's fine. I'm just suggesting...
Big brothers, big sisters is what I was trying to think of. It's operating out of there as well. And it's only on an annual agreement. And then it also serves as a gymnasium for middle school.
Yeah, I would just like to say, too, I was in no way, shape, or form advocating that we cut that particular $230,000. I just wanted to add to the conversation that information, that most districts do live under the state, and that we might benefit from part-time versus full-time, not necessarily advocating that we cut that.
Well, but I was just saying, having spoken with Debbie, that most districts are not operating under their program 100% anymore, now that the state has cut back on that. The 30% to 60% is how much many districts, especially of our size, are funding of parents' teachers locally these days.
Okay, let's move on to the next topic, please.
All right, there are some things that could be cut from the assessment department, some online resources. The ones that I was told were No Red Ink, M-Class, SRI, and Matrix. And I'm going to tell you right up front, other than being able to read those words, I have no idea what they are. But if you have questions, I'm sure Dr. Lau could answer them.
Could you say those one more time?
That I can do. No Red Ink, M-Class, SRI, and Matrix.
Thank you.
And with Matrix, I believe they would intend to replace it with something less expensive.
Because since we're doing the iReady now, isn't that sort of taking the place of some of these other ones? So kind of we're over...
Well, I mean, the intent has been to consolidate our assessment system. But at the same time, each of those items that Dr. Kraus mentioned are familiar and provide metrics that teachers are comfortable with. But at the same time, we have systems now in place that provide metrics that will allow the teachers to utilize the data in the same way and to continue to serve the students. So while those choices are hard, I think it would, it's not the time to duplicate or add on to systems that could drive towards efficiency.
And I think that we've been driving towards that efficiency for several years, so...
Yes, that was the intent of the assessment program evaluation as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions on that one? All right, eliminating all middle school sports is on there. We felt like with the amount of cuts that the district is going to be required to make in order to remain fiscally solvent, that we needed to look at everything. Staff, co-curricular activities, extracurricular, staffing needs, all of those things. We've taken a sizable chunk out of administration, that $615,000. We spend approximately 6.2% of our budget goes to administration. That $615,000 represents an 8.8% cut in that, so it's above what we spend percentage-wise on administration. There are going to have to be some significant teaching staff and classified staff reductions as well. We also thought that we had to put everything on the table and also look at our extra and co-curricular activities. We got some feedback that at the middle school, many students are utilizing club teams and that sort of thing. And I know that anybody, not everybody can afford to do that. Again, I'm going to say this again, we don't think anything up here is a good idea, but they're all things that we have to entertain. By eliminating all middle school sports, that would be savings of approximately $200,000. Questions there?
Mr. Snead.
Like you said, all of these cuts are painful, but this one really hurts because in middle school... I remember when I was younger, many moons ago, came over from McKinley School, which got closed, and then I went to Spring Garden. And those middle school sports, although they didn't have the elaborate sports they have now, was a difference for me. And a lot of kids, their morale is low, they're only in the middle school for two years, and those teams mean a lot to those kids. Their morale's good, they have team spirit, and it shows in the classroom, because they get the grades so they can play and participate. And these extracurricular activities, I don't care if it's the band or what it is, are all alternatives to crime and drugs. And I think $200,000 is a small price to pay for our middle schoolers.
Dr. Kraus, I'm just going to mention, because maybe the alternative to that would be the pay-to-play, which is also on the list. If we don't eliminate the middle school, then isn't the pay-to-participate another? I mean, I see those two going together.
Right, there are two different proposals up there. The next line is pay-to-play or pay-to-participate at the high school level. Down at the very bottom of the list is middle school, pay-to-participate. And we were, that is on there based on whether you would eliminate middle school sports. If you did, that would charge a participation fee for co-curriculars, anything that had a paid sponsor that was not sports. Now, if you left middle school sports and implemented a pay-to-play or pay-to-participate with all activities, then your number of 25,000 would go up proportionally because of the number of kids who participate in athletics.
Question, is that 200,000, is that most of these salaries?
Yeah, is that coaching stipends? Is that what that is?
Well, it's coaching, but you also have a lot of money tied up in officials and utilities and transportation, uniforms. I mean, there's a...
Okay.
That includes pretty much everything.
The pay-to-play bothers me because I know of a lot of athletes in these programs that do not have the funding to get into these programs. And I know personally several that are going to colleges right now because they got scholarships, and there's no way their parents could afford to pay to play in high school or afford to send them to college, so I'm really concerned about losing that.
I don't disagree with anything you're saying, though.
Mr. Koch, I think we would be better off, though, with the pay-to-play than the total elimination. Don't you?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's like, that's the two options. Two options.
Cut off one finger or your whole hand.
Oh, your whole hand, yeah.
I get it.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Snead.
First of all, what's the total amount that we really need to do here? Dr. Newhart, one meeting I saw...
Seven million dollars if you freeze salaries, and 8.5 if you opt to give step to everyone.
Okay.
And that's to balance the budget? And we are going to finish this year with about 19% reserves. Is that what you were estimating?
No, that's what you, that's what you just finished.
Do we have an estimate?
Yeah, your budget estimate is.
16.9. And we recently voted to not drop below 15%.
Correct.
Okay, let me finish here. So we know, we know how much money we got to cut, right? Okay. With this recommendation, are we going to go line by line and vote on each thing? Or you want it done as a package? Or how's that going to work?
I'll let Dr. Kraus act, because I think we're all in agreement. We'd rather see it packaged.
Well, I think a package probably would be better. If you'll notice on the right-hand column, and the revised number is $9,332,000, is more than either of those sums, either the $7 million or the 8.5. So there would be some flexibility within that to either not do some of them, to change the numbers.
So maybe another alternative would be to rank the cuts and then see where the funded and unfunded line is, rather than just voting on a $9 million package. Another thing is, why in the world did we ask for 15 million from the citizens when we only needed 7.5 million? I mean, that, already, it's not, it's crazy.
Because 11.5, and had additional new items of approximately 6 million included.
You've got to live within your means. I mean...
And that's why, and that's why we're talking about this.
That had nothing to do with this, but I'm just saying it might be another alternative. I've been down this road before. I've served on other boards, Olympic Committee. We get cuts all the time. We have a priority list, and we have a funded list, and you see where you're at. And then if something's unfunded, you've got to find the money somewhere else or add another... I mean, there's ways of doing this where you don't just do a package, and you can really see the things that hurt the most and try to fit as much as we can in, or reduce it even, that's another option. But it's cumbersome, it takes a long time, but I think it's a really good way to do it. Just a suggestion to you.
Let's talk further here while you're on this, because really, one of the first decisions you need to make on December 11th is whether you freeze or give steps in movement. That makes a difference, whether it's an 8.5 million package or a $7 million package. Where does the board feel on that? Personally, and I think even as administrators, we've got to eliminate this staff versus administrators mentality. We're either all in this together, or we're not. That has got to change in this St. Joe School District. And we've made great inroads with that in many things that we've done. But to do one or the other is, in my opinion, not wise. Either do all of us, or you do none of us.
The last time I was involved, and I've been on a few of these, that didn't pass and some that did pass, we froze all the salaries for everybody. It wasn't separate for administrators, it was the whole group for a year. No cost of living increase, no steps, and...
And the headaches of freezing salaries, because we dealt with that back in the fall and spring of 1516, is kicking the can down the road for the next person to worry about.
Well, I think what happened, if I recall, maybe Martin can refresh my memory, but we froze the salaries, and then when we did get funding back, and we did get, we made up their steps. We put it back in at a later time, so that's another option. So, yeah, I know it's bad, this is all bad, but...
Well, it is, but it isn't. That's the point I tried to make earlier. You have an opportunity to reshape this district to the direction envisioned that you want to reshape it, instead of going down the same road, instead of repeating history and not wanting to make the hard decisions. You have an opportunity to reshape it, Dennis.
It's a hard decision to get on this board to begin with, but I'll tell you, we'll make the decisions, we'll do the best we can. I'm just wondering what the process is going to be here. I'm with you all the way. I...
Well, I think, first of all, because I do believe we've kind of gotten off task, we probably need to finish hearing the presentation so that we understand why each thing is being proposed to be in some which way or form cut. And again, I say proposed. And then, yeah, we may want to do something like you're talking about as a board, rank priority, what we individually, and then come together as a board. But first of all, we need to get through this list and Dr. Kraus's explanation so we know what we're going to do if we can get back to that task.
Okay, so with, just with the sports, I wanted to make one more comment. I mean, obviously, you have, well, I see three options. Either you leave them alone, do business as usual, you eliminate, or you do a pay-to-participate. Those would be basically the three options. So we've kind of discussed pay-to-participate at the high school level. Our thought at either level was that you have some kids who may be in one thing, some who are in none, and then you have some other in 12. We didn't think it was fair to go beyond a max of five activities for a student, and so we would cap that at either 250 if you're charging $50 or 125 at the middle school. Moving down to restructure the curriculum advisor program, we spend about $375,000 there, met with some of those folks, and they feel like we could achieve a savings of about $125,000 by doing that.
So it's not eliminating it's all, it's consolidating and...
I think that the proposal is to go with two elementary advisors, two secondary, and one fine arts slash electives.
Actually, that's a total of five generalists.
Five generalists now. I must be a revision or two behind. I'm sorry.
So could you, five generalists?
So there wouldn't be English department chair at Central anymore, and there wouldn't be...
Well, this is curriculum advisor.
Dr. Williams, you want to come to the podium?
Oh, I'm sorry. Department chair is the next line.
But not the same chair?
Yeah.
So I met with the curriculum advisors with Dr. Hubick and Dr. Norman earlier this week, and some of the feedback that we received, because originally, it is true, what we talked to them about was some configuration that looked at two secondary, two elementary, and one fine arts or elective area. Based on some of the feedback that I received from them, it looks like some configuration of five generalists. So remaining with the five that we had spoken about, but then making them generalists in terms of process and instructional expertise rather than specific content.
So how does that work when they need to write the curriculum for similar business that has so many different kinds of classes, and you have to be pretty specialized to be able to do that?
So the staff already works with the curriculum advisors to write the specific curriculum for each of those areas, grade levels or courses. And they pull teachers in the current model, and we pay teachers to write the curriculum. So if you are in a generalist model, you would still work with the teachers of those grade levels, of those content areas, who are experts to write that curriculum. So that model portion would not change. What we have is we have, particularly at the secondary level, we have, each content area has release time. One person, the curriculum advisor, has release time. And when you total up all of the release time for our two full-time who are elementary and the release time for all of the secondary, it's just about 4.64, if my memory serves me. 4.64 total FTEs when you calculate the release time. So if you would round that up to five, you would be in the same situation with number of release hours, and it would be five full-time people rather than people who are teaching and receiving one release period, which may not coincide with the other teachers in their content area that they need to work with, who have a planning period in a different building at a different time. So I will say again what everyone else has reiterated and what I said to them earlier this week. The significance of the cuts we have to make is great, and it is going to impact everyone somehow. And the work they do is good work, and it doesn't devalue the work they're doing, and it doesn't minimize the pain that this kind of cut makes us feel. But when we have to look at each thing, line by line, to see, is there a way for us to drive to some efficiency, maintain some level of expertise, and move forward? This was one way to accomplish that, retain curriculum advisors in this district and reconfigure the model that we have, utilizing teacher expertise, full-time rather than with release hours on the secondary level, and still utilizing teacher expertise in the writing of the content curriculum. So then those people who are generalists, as is done in many other districts, when it's led by one or two people who are curriculum specialists, they're experts in curriculum writing processes, whether that's Ainsworth or Wiggins or McTie or any of those other models. They lead the people through the process of identifying standards, unpacking those standards, and writing to priorities. And once they do that, with those people who are experts in that grade level content, course level content, whichever one it is, then they produce good curriculum.
What about the knowledge of the programs that they're in? For example, Project Lead the Way, where somebody is overseeing the teachers of this program and recognizing when a new one is needed or assisting them with very specialized, where they go off to learn this, you know, from a place where they have to learn a lot of detail. If a generalist curriculum writer is maybe not going to be familiar with all of that and we're losing something by losing the coordinator who knows all that stuff when overseeing the other employees. And I assume it's that way with business because that's kind of the same.
You have high school, business, you have Project Lead the Way. You also have, you know, the Canon of Literature and English Language Arts. You have different methodologies in spelling. You have workshop model in reading and writing and math. Absolutely. There are certain pieces of area expertise that we have to account for if we reconfigure this model. And so we would have to ensure that. You have department chairs as the very next line. I'm concerned if both of those would go away, department chairs and curriculum advisors, because you would lose that. So if curriculum advisors are restructured and we retain department chairs, your department chairs are the ones who would hold that expertise and would make recommendations to principals, to curriculum advisors, who are generalists, to Dr. Hubick, to Dr. Norman, to myself. There are other ways to communicate that. It would have to change from its current model. Absolutely, you are right.
So if we are going to have five generalist curriculum coordinators, we would no longer have core curriculum coordinators either or the elective ones, right?
Correct.
And so those people aren't, are not going to teach any classes. They'll just, that's their only job, these new people, right, is to be there?
The generals, correct.
Yes, to teach any classes.
We currently have that happening right now with the two elementary generalists that we have. They are in full-time release.
It's such a broad, in so many schools. And, but I'm just making sure I understand. I'm not making a judgment.
No, I'm trying to make sure I'm following.
Just making sure I understand that. So then, are they going to be, what is it they will do every day?
So, for instance, would be today. Mrs. Dorsey, who is on a one-period release as a math curriculum advisor, she took teachers on a learning rounds. So they're working on, one of the focus areas in math is transitions between elementary to middle and middle to high school. So they visited a middle school with elementary teachers, and she led a learning round. So what they would do is exactly what the elementary curriculum advisors do now and what some of the secondary ones are doing with those learning rounds and those transitional job-embedded professional development things. So Nancy Kirby and Kristy Jackson are our current elementary curriculum advisors. They work in job-embedded in the buildings all of the time. So they're working with teachers on processes. A teacher may need assistance with a workshop process. They may need support in a certain area with a curricular resource. Those people would go in and, just like they're doing right now, but on a full-time basis, go in and support those teachers.
They would stay very busy. Would they be involved at all in assessing how some of the people are doing in the classroom?
They are, in the current model and in the proposed model, they are non-evaluative.
Well, it just feels like they would know the most about it, and so they might be good people to give that kind of feedback to, the people who do...
I think it would undermine the trust, and it would undermine the willingness to allow access and sharing into classrooms if they became evaluative. That is not their role. It is their role to assist in growing expertise and providing support and helping us develop a strong curricular program.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions? Department chairs came up later, I believe. I heard it at United SJSD. And so if there are any questions there, I will try to answer them, but I'll also defer to Dr. Hubick because that is a secondary item as well. Any questions related to that?
I'll go back to the curriculum structure that we have. For somebody who doesn't work in the educational world, what is our current model? How's it implemented?
So currently, we have 16 people who are curriculum advisors. Two of them are full-time at the elementary level. We have one elementary health and PE, one secondary business, one secondary English Language Arts, one secondary family and consumer sciences, one secondary health and PE, one secondary industrial technology, one JROTC, one secondary mathematics, one secondary science, one secondary social sciences, one secondary world languages, one K-12 gifted and talented, one K-12 fine arts, and one K-12 library and media. And their release time ranges from 1.0 for the full-time elementary to 0.125 if they have a single release hour. We also have two of them who have no release hours because they opted not to give up an hour to be with students.
Okay. So in other words, 16 staff, two full-time, 14 specialists currently.
They're all specialists, yes, but on part-time.
Okay. And you're proposing going to five generalists?
Full-time, all full-time.
For a...
The current...
Propose savings of 125.
The current model, if you include the extra salary that they receive and the cost of the release time, which is generally 1/8 of their salary, is $387,335.18. If you go to a five-generalist model, that would allow us to save about $125,000, maintain a curriculum advisor program, but restructure it.
It's more efficient.
It's more efficient, yeah.
And part of that thinking was looking at the model we already have. When you add up the release time for everyone and you look at it being 4.64, rounding that, you're not, you can't find 0.64 of a person. So making that a full person would be five, and it still drove to a more efficient price structure.
Are there places that do it that way now?
Many places use one person or two people who are in charge of curriculum, and they are overseeing curriculum and instruction. For instance, Lawrence, Kansas, uses something called Teachers on Special Assignment. The last time I was involved in researching with them, and they would pull in, if they're on a curriculum revision cycle, someone would come out of the classroom full-time to be the writer of that curriculum and then go back the next year. But they have one or two full-time people who would be tapping and then overseeing those processes. Other places have one, maybe two. And having one person for every content area is an exception rather than a rule. So this is a model that does look very different than most districts. There is no state standard for it, so it looks a little different for each district. So it is based on district preference. But I would say that, in general, for us to have 16 people who have an advisor role is an exception rather than a rule.
And do we also have, since we were saying we could ask you about chair positions too, which makes sense, and...
Sure.
For your comments and Dr. Hubick.
Please.
If you find it's appropriate. Do we have department chairs in the same fields?
Yes.
And are there any that are missing? Do we have coordinators but no department chair, for example, where we might shift?
Library and gifted and talented. And I believe ROTC usually, if I recall correctly, at the high school level, sometimes they are with the HPE, Health PE, and JROTC come together to make a larger department. That could be a change. I may be incorrect.
And other than that, elementary PE, there aren't any department chairs at the elementary level, right?
Elementary, you're talking about a curriculum advisor at the elementary level with PE.
Well, I'm just saying we don't have a department chair.
At the elementary level, and Dr. Norman, weigh in, but I believe their structure is building leadership teams for which they do not receive extra duty salary.
They don't get the extra duty money, but they do it on their own time or whatever.
So we have a department chair for business, and we have a department chair for Project Lead the Way, and we have a department chair for...
We have a department chair for IT, which would encompass Project Lead the Way, woodworking, metalworking, drafting, all of those things, yes.
And then, forgive me, I don't know all of those, so I just have to go with the one I'm familiar with.
No, I just want it to be clear.
So thank you. And then, like, department chairs are, are they by building?
They are by building.
And the middle school?
Per department.
Middle schools have it too? I'm just making sure I understand.
No, absolutely. Which is why I have some concern if you restructure and you don't have, as you said earlier, someone who is running point in each of those areas in one of the configurations, easing that transition and communication.
Do we have a situation now where the person is the coordinator and the department chair?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about that? Yes?
This is a comment, maybe to other board members, but I think this is a line item. I struggle with the elimination of this because I think we have to ask ourselves, is this a school district that values leadership and developing leadership? And 122,000 in the grand scheme of this sheet, as well as the budget, seems like a fairly small number. And I guess it looks, these are 66 department chairs, so it's a $2,000 stipend, it sounds like.
It's actually on a schedule based on experience and size of department.
Okay. So it's not equal to $2,000 extra duty.
Is that correct, Dr. Kraus?
In any department that has three or more members is eligible to have a department chair. And the stipend varies on the number of years that they've been in that role and on the number of teachers in the department.
Okay.
But the average is around $2,000.
Okay. I personally would like for this to be a school district that rewards leadership and effective leadership. I like the idea of an extra duty payment for the leaders of departments and developing that kind of leadership within the district. You made the point that we don't compensate on the elementary level.
Maybe we could find a way to do that.
Eventually, I think so.
Probably should, yeah.
So that's just my own personal thought on that line item.
I think that kind of went out at the elementary level with an instructional coach, didn't it? That's more the compensating for the...
I don't know. I can't answer that question.
I'm not sure either in saying that. That maybe aligns more with the curriculum advisor. And the one thing that I would say about it, I agree with, we should encourage leadership. And I know that communication has not been the best in our district, and I know that the concerns that people have come to me about with eliminating the department chairs is the fact that that's where the communication comes from, district communication into the department. You know, they get a lot of that. That's a valuable tool. A department chair, you know, keeps their people up on what they need to know. And so I've heard you say a couple times, you're just leery of eliminating both.
I'm leery of eliminating any of this.
I know. We don't want to eliminate anything, but...
It's going to cause us to have to be very, very mindful of everything we do, as we should be doing anyway. But in a situation of deep change, that adds complications to the situation.
And again, with the comments from the community, you know, we need to be running at the most efficient. And I've heard oftentimes, this is more efficient, this is more efficient, so...
We do need to be running as more efficient, but we also understand, as comment has been made many times tonight, none of this is popular.
Right. None of it.
And nobody wants to make the cuts, but these are the things that have been brought to our attention that can be done. They've been vetted, and they've been added to the list, so...
Dr. Williams, who assumes the responsibilities if the department chair positions are eliminated?
Yeah, good question.
We would have to...
Does that fall to the building principles?
It would, likely.
In most districts that have, maybe not this size, do they have department chairs? Say, smaller districts.
I would say it depends.
And does that rest with the building principles of being that responsibility? And what, maybe also for everybody's benefit, and in a lot of these questions, I'm just, I know the answers, but I'm trying to get everybody, explain. Tell everybody what a department chair does. What is their job description?
Well, it would be to disseminate information, to hear concerns from their department, to bring those concerns to administration or to the appropriate person, to assist new teachers and get them, give them access to resources, to provide support for each other, to work together with job, you know, design some job-embedded professional development to standardize some of the practices and procedures within departments. You know, I think at the high school level, having been a high school teacher, one of the things that my department chair always did for me was make sure that we were all consistently employing procedures related to finals, related to weighted grading, related to... to, you know, alignment of our courses and syllabus and, you know, following the curriculum. That was the district's curriculum, whether that was, you know, in this district or any of the other places.
So if this is eliminated, it, it...
I think that there is more...
Rest with the building principles and all...
Here's another thing that I know that department chairs have assumed. After the elimination of instructional coaches, I think that they have assumed a great deal of, of support in, in terms of the role of support for new staff members. Whether they are veteran teachers coming to this district or they are new teachers to the profession, they have assumed support roles, mentoring roles, informally, if not formally, for those new staff members. And I think that onboarding and acclamation, acculturation, whatever you choose to term it, is so important for retention. And, and, you know, with, with turnover numbers like that, we certainly need to retain quality people.
And again, I would say that, you know, every bit of that is good stuff. Every bit of that is really good for secondary teachers, but...
There is nothing on the list that doesn't bring value to our, to our district and to our community in some way.
And I would like for us to see...
And provide some positive impact, and that's the reality.
Yes, and I would like to see us be able to do something like that on the elementary level, too. Do we now pay stipends for mentors on the elementary level?
The professional development committee, the district professional development committee, last spring voted that in this year, we do have a formal mentoring program for teachers in year one and, and year two. So we are, Kendra oversees professional development for the district, but that was something that all of our mentors have signed a contract through the professional development committee, and we have a guide for year one teachers.
I remember that in your presentation.
Yeah.
I just didn't remember if there was a paid incentive to...
If they are in years one or two of the profession, not in the district, but in the profession overall, yes.
To the mentoring teacher, to that person, that's one of it.
To the mentoring teacher.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Persman.
Did I misspeak, Kendra, is that correct?
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a question. We're talking about efficiency, and we all want to be as efficient as we can, but then we also have to look at the effectiveness. So with this proposal of going from 16 to five full-time, is that as efficient or effective as it should be?
I think it, it can be effective. We can learn a lot from other districts who have different models than we currently have, and when we consider that we are generally writing curriculum once every four to six to eight years, depending upon the course, I, I do think that we could reorganize, retain curriculum advisors, reorganize the structure that we have. And do I think there'll be challenges in the first year after a reorganization and a change? Absolutely there will be. We'll have to learn, you know, we can predict what we believe they will be, we will learn some more about the others that we didn't predict, and we will adjust. So, do I think it can be effective? I do believe it can be.
Okay. I just, I don't want to lose sight of that, because I don't want to just make cuts because we have to make cuts, and then we lose the effectiveness of what we have, and then we lose value.
I agree with that.
And I might ask, 66 just seems crazy big for, but I'm not, that's not necessary, obviously, but seems...
Well, you take a certain number of departments times the number of secondary buildings.
Right. And so I wonder if we're talking about restructuring from 16 to five for the curriculum advisor. I know I've asked before, 66, and some people would say either eliminate them all or don't eliminate them, but do you think there's a way to restructure and make that number smaller and still be efficient and effective? I know there's probably a hidden nightmare.
I think that if that was, if that was what you asked us to do, we would certainly look for a way to do that.
Just ask.
Mr. Milholt.
How, how do you measure the effectiveness of what they're doing right now? And how, how would you know a year from now if the changes you made are, have they hurt the district, improved the district, or is everything status quo? How do you measure that?
Well, I think one of the things we're doing right now is, are we staying true to the, the timeline, the table of curriculum revision that we have published, that we presented to the board? Are we able to, to keep up with that? And are we still producing the curriculum that we are required to produce?
So you would have some measurement if it was not working that you would...
We have previously published to the board that, that timetable of curriculum revisions, and are we still maintaining the timetable we've set forward previously under the current structure? That would be one way. Have we maintained accreditation in programs that are auxiliary to the, to the core curriculum? So High School of Business, Project Lead the Way, some of those other things, are we maintaining accreditation in those areas through those programs?
Program evaluation programs, first.
Program evaluation, we do.
Yeah, I feel like some of the...
We have a curriculum one.
Some of the things we're doing here is a gamble, and I want to make sure that we have the right measurements so we understand if, if the gamble's paying off.
The ultimate measure of curriculum is, you know, in the core content area, we were to write them to align with the Missouri learning standards so that we would be able to best prepare our students to meet achievement indicators for state testing. So, yes, there are indicators outside of the timetable I've cited, and there are student outcome indicators that are aligned with those as well. In the elective areas, you have, in PE, you have fitness grant results in elective areas, vocational elective areas, career concentration areas, you have technical skills assessments, absolutely.
Okay, if there's no more questions, we'll move forward. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
All right, the next item on the list says eliminate adult programs at HTC. What it should say is eliminate our oversight, or SJSD oversight, of those programs. We are not advocating in any way that, that those programs are not beneficial, they're extremely beneficial to the community, it would be a real loss if any of them were not in, in place. What we're suggesting is that there are, are post-secondary institutions who could easily step in and do the oversight, keep the same building, pay us nominal rent, and we would be able then to recoup the cost of one administrator. We currently have three administrators at Hilliard, and we could eliminate, limit that to two if someone else were providing oversight for the post-secondary programs.
Dr. Kraus, excuse me, Dr. Kraus, can you give us some data on what that? Okay, so we know that we could, we could save 110,000, but do we know if we have any takers, anyone interested in facilitating those programs?
What we're hoping to hear from you is a consensus to allow us to pursue...
Pursue that, okay.
...post-secondary institutions who might be interested in providing oversight for those programs.
Okay, okay.
And then I'm thinking that we would probably bring in some people from the business community who would be able to help determine what the needs are or what that model should look like, but that would be something that we would be open to.
Don't we have accreditation for some of those programs through community colleges right now?
They, they all have a post-secondary institution.
One might assume that we would approach them about running that altogether. And I want to make sure that I understand this correctly from what you just said. So we're not saying to stop these programs?
No.
They are still continuing, people should still sign up, and things are going on normally for next semester and next year, not to worry. Prerequisits you're taking and finishing up this semester are still going to be good for the program that begins next fall, and such stuff like that. We're just trying to figure out how to administrate it.
Yeah, we, we feel like it would be an attractive proposition for any number of post-secondary institutions. Our, our programs are successful, our students are always very well-trained, they do well on their exams and, and get their, their licenses, certificates. We're simply saying that if someone else provides the oversight, we could, we can realize the savings.
So then the money for the tuition that people would pay for those programs would go to those institutions?
Correct.
Community colleges also fall under the same PSRS and peers retirement system, so they would not lose out on any of that transition. They'd be within the same retirement system.
The people that we employ currently would remain, is what you're saying?
Correct. If we would be able to pursue this and it would come to fruition through a community college efforts, it would be under the same retirement system that we are currently providing them and they're paying into, so that would continue as well. That would, it would not be like, and I hate even to bring this up, outsourcing food service.
Yeah, it's not the same.
Okay, it's not the same thing.
So, I have a question. So if we were to do this, is there been a way that we would be able to expand our high school programs, or would that be for another day?
That's, they're still taking up the space in the building.
That, that would be for another day, but obviously, if we got out from underneath post-secondary, we could focus a lot more effectively and efficiently on our 912, you know, workforce development and vocational programs.
Which I think would, we would want to be our long-term goal.
Yes, yeah.
One more question. Right now, when we have North Central Community College accrediting our, some program of ours, do we pay them for that?
I don't know the answer to that.
Do they just, out of the goodness of their heart, decide to give accreditation to our program?
They don't give us accreditation.
Well, they're, they're giving somebody...
They just sign off. The dental body gives us the accreditation, nursing body gives us the accreditation, not the university.
So, no one gets a, I thought that they had to go through that university in order to retain that accreditation from the dental department or the...
They get the degree from the university.
They get a degree from them?
Right.
So, surely, we pay them something for that? No?
We, we receive all federal funding, Perkins dollars in regards to it, and the, the student programs and covering the costs, and Wes, correct me here, it's basically a break-even, if not little in the black, is that correct?
As long as the programs are fully staffed.
If they're fully staffed and...
Not fully studentized.
But, but our costs come in the operation, the administrative side. And, and you just went through a very deep and severe audit provided at Hilliard's. So you also get out from underneath particularly the, the...
Higher ed?
The, the headache side on the higher ed federal program. It's not that we still wouldn't receive federal funds for the, for the 912 vocational side and the Perkins dollars.
Sure. I just thought there might be some money that we're paying for something like that.
Chris, you might as well come over, because I know you're...
I don't believe that there's any fees associated with the accreditation. So credit is articulated, that's why we have those articulation agreements. Some of the real positives I see, number one, we spoke about, or we heard about expansion for our high school programs, and that is true. If we can maintain what we have right now and we can offload it to an interested community college, they can be the promotional vehicle to promote more students. Currently, right now, enrollment in our adult ed programs is not very high, it's about 100 students. We've had years where we had many more than that. As a result, the district stands to clear about $40,000. Now, in years past, that's been closer to, say, 250 to $300,000. So you can see in enrollment in the adult ed programs, and there's tremendous administrative overhead. Now, when I say that, it's neutral, because we're coming ahead, $40,000. But think of the time and energy invested. We have two financial aid officers, one who was hired as a result of that audit telling us we had to, to work on some procedures. There's two more that work with admissions, enrollment, and then we have an adult education coordinator. So there's an awful lot of overhead that requires a certain level of staffing, that if we could somehow disassociate from that, we could still offer our community everything we have now. In fact, we'd probably have more students there and probably strengthen the partnership. You know, the, the one challenge that's probably ahead of us with that is higher education, sometimes there's some competitive spirits, and everybody has, you know, experienced a reduction in funding from, at the state level. So I, I do have every reason to believe, though, that if we, if we get consensus from the board tonight, that we would probably have, probably two community colleges expressing a great deal of interest. Something else to think about, number one, it is lucrative because highly trained, certified staff already onsite. It's, it's proven that it makes money. And these colleges, they don't have the overhead costs that we have, so they've already have structures in place to make sure that they're compliant with financial aid. They already have the admissions officers and everything else. So I really see this as a positive win-win that could free up Hilliard staff to really focus. And the other piece of this would be the enhancement grants. Our enhancement grants could focus solely on high school programming with career and tech ed.
We, we believe also, just in some initial discussions we've had with business leaders, that would very much coincide with their workforce development and programming.
Well, I know that there's a lot of quality jobs that are here in this community that we don't have trained individuals to take. So I know that there's really a need for that, but this sort of, to me, this sounds like a win-win where we can, it's still being provided, but we just don't have the expense of it.
The oversight.
And I really think that this will strengthen careers.
Is there consensus just to, to, to work towards this? Because we, we've got to get moving to get some answers.
Yes.
There is for me, too.
Dr. Hubeck, Dr. Williams, you good?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the next on the list is the high school summer activities. Excuse me. Each summer, we have 16 people from each high school who are paid $1,810 each, and it's basically weight room supervision. We also have other summer activities, some of our co-curricular things, like they may have a band camp or other things. We're suggesting that if, if that were eliminated, that's $86,000. And again, there are lots of other things that we could look at, too, or you could say, let's only pay 24 instead of 48, any number of options there, but that's what that item is about. Any questions?
So, say that again.
Each high school selects 16 individuals to operate the weight room over the summer.
Is there a need to have anyone in the weight room over the summer?
I guess that would depend on your perspective.
A liability issue.
Well, did you mean, do we have to have a staff person in there? Absolutely, yeah, you'd have...
Well, the question, do the weight rooms need to be open?
Yes, for coach, for...
Again, that depends on your perspective. All of your coaches and anyone who participates in athletics would tell you, yes, you want to have your athletes as strong as you can.
Well, that answers my question. There are other ways to do it, for the coaches that are... I just think that's not the one.
Any, any other questions on that item?
And so you, you would entertain just maybe a reduction as opposed to a total elimination?
We would entertain whatever you want to tell us, Mr. Rucker.
Okay, but this is a total elimination of all?
This would be a total elimination, yes.
Okay.
That's the 16 people for each school.
Per high school.
Dennis has a good point, though. I'm going to bring it up because he's not going to say it, but isn't this part of their stipend for coaching?
No, that's totally separate.
That's during their contract year.
They, they receive a stipend based on the extra duty schedule for their in-season activities, and this is outside of that, and it's additional.
Outside of that.
So they could get both? A, a potential person could be both?
Yeah, so...
Dennis thinks it's part of the job.
If you don't work, if you have a high caliber athlete, you just quit coaching them when the season's over, the work's done in the offseason. This should all be a, the whole coaching philosophy here. He said I was old school, and I am old school. You get paid to be a coach, weight training's part of it, and getting the team ready. We're not, you don't hire a coach for, you know, the, the season. There's a lot more in the area for relationships. You gotta have...
You kind of pay them by the season, though.
Well, you know what? Everybody wants more.
Unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. It works as Dr. Kraus says, you have a season, in-season, and you get paid for that as long as it's a school year, and then out of season, when school's out.
Chiefs, coach. They only get paid...
It's not the Chiefs, we're not the Chiefs.
And y'all should have to have stipends.
Well, the way they're playing, they shouldn't pay any of them.
I've been a coach all my life, can't get your team ready, you're not the coach.
Dennis, I think I, I agree.
That will do.
I agree, I agree with you. Practically speaking, this, a coach is attracted, if, if we're trying to hire a coach, we offer a, a package, and this is part of the package. And, and what's being proposed is eliminate this part of the package.
Well, most of the really good coaches, they're not going to quit doing it. They gotta get their team ready, if they want to be... They gotta get their team ready, if they want to be winner, they, hey, it's part of the job. Okay, it's, you know, we started, this all came from, I'll give you a little history lesson. The Sports Foundation, God bless their soul, Jigs Toodle and, and Dr. McMillan, set up a program where they paid the coaches extra money in the summer to try to jump-start them to get the kids in better shape and be a team. That was funded by an outside group, okay? When that funding started dropping off, the school district picked it up. And then, you know, and, and, listen, I played the band, too, but people don't believe me, and I wasn't very good, but I did play, you know, then the band one, the RLC one, I mean, we, we just kept increasing, which they deserved to be paid, too, if, if they do the work. But it's gotten out of, you know, it's gotten to where, okay, it's a luxury, and, uh, and, uh, and I'll get in a lot of trouble for this, let me tell you. But, it's part of the job.
That's why he didn't want to say anything, so...
You know, every time I open my mouth, I get killed. I had people shoot at my house the other night, in this job. Let me tell you, I'm not kidding.
Oh, my God.
This is how bad it is.
I'm sorry, Dennis.
It's gonna get worse.
Well, we saw on the Facebook post, all of us, where we were basically open season to...
What we've got to understand with all this, maybe I should wait to say this for last, but it's on my mind right now, we got defeated seventy-two percent to twenty-eight percent in a recent election. Could be a lot of things there. But, we have got to come back and show efficiency. And, yeah, each one of these is, is emotional to do. And what this community has got to understand, and obviously, we've got to learn as well, is what do you want to see? Because we're fighting other communities that are supporting and funding their educational programs. Ju- just in even taking it another level, Dennis, Liberty North, I know for a fact, just because I know the gentleman, pays their head football coach a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars a year, and that's all he does. Weight room, head football coach. But they're supporting their programs. By no way could we ever do that in the St. Joe School District. That is really the bottom line here. We've got to find out and be as efficient as possible, and then you can build from that. It's almost like you are breaking this down to where you're, you're the basic educational programs and focus, then you can build it back up. That's, I view where we're at.
Revenue source. That's true, but it's sad that we have to...
It's sad that we've got to do that.
Yeah, but even as we build it back up, it has to be built back up efficiently.
Correct.
To be effective. Um, so we're finding, obviously, we're finding some things that we can streamline. Let's get streamlined the best that we can, and then go forward. I mean, there's, I don't, besides the cuts here, I don't see, there's not a lot of negativity. We, these are some things that can be done to, um, create the least amount of pain, and because we value our staff. So we're trying to do our best to, uh, eliminate the least amount of staff as possible. So, I understand, uh, what you're saying, Dr. Newhart, and yes, yes, we got, we got stomped pretty good, um, but there's a couple of, uh, pretty high-stakes issues involved in that stomping that we can change, and so, before we make those changes, we gotta show this efficiency, like you're saying. So, we have at least four or five more items here that Dr. Kraus needs to talk about. So let's, uh, let's keep our comments, uh, to what we're actually talking about now. Let's get through this. Dr. Kraus, you're gonna be here to rest tonight, if you're not. So go right ahead, gentlemen, let's...
All right, next one is IB test fees. Um, the district absorbs the cost for any student who takes an IB test, it's approximately sixty thousand dollars, uh, not anything we're required to do, so that would be a potential savings. Any questions there?
I have a hard word on that one, too.
There, there are so many things in our, in our school that become need-based, lunches, scholarships. Is, is this one of those things that could become need-based as well?
Could become whatever you want it to be.
Okay.
Because I, I know that we have had, in the past, parents come and basically tell us that if they had to financially pay for the test, their children would not be in the program.
No, yes, completely agree.
Yeah, so, you know, that hardship, because there's, I mean, literally, they could not afford to do it, they were taking away an opportunity for a child in some way, but if we could look at a need base, that, that might be...
There's issues.
A criteria that's set for them?
But, yes, I agree, and I know what you're saying, but much like the pay-to-play, um, if you do, if you do this need base, there's gonna be some people who just throw their hands up and say, well, if, if I have to pay for it, we're just not gonna do it. They're not gonna walk through those steps that they're gonna need to do to get there. And we're gonna be limiting that number of people interested in, in taking those IB classes, which I think are very valuable. Um, also in the IB department, uh, these classes, many of these classes are two-year classes, and you're sort of taking some of your assessment as you go. So you can't just not take the test at the end, you've already taken the test throughout the two years, it's just the last part of it that you're taking at the end. It's, you just can't not take it, you have to take it. And so if you have to take the test, I just think that we should then therefore pay for it, because you have no choice. You, it's not like in an AP class, where you can take the class, still get the value of the class, but not get the college credit from the test. That, you don't get, don't get to leave that out in IB, it's, it's, the testing is happening all throughout. So, I don't like this particular one, but as you said, we get to look at them and discuss, and so there we go.
How many students take advantage of IB? Like, now, what would be our enrollment in the IB program?
Dr. Hubbey, do you have that number?
In April twenty-seven, uh, twenty-seventeen, we presented the IB program evaluation, so it showed, uh, the number of students who were currently enrolled. Uh, looks like in fifteen, sixteen, there were approximately one-hundred-and-forty-four. Student enrollment in sixteen, seventeen was two-hundred-and-sixty-one. So for a three-year span, uh, it was one-seventy-five, two-forty-one, two-sixty-one, and the, the overall cost per student at that time was five-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars per student, um, then five-thirty-two, and then five-oh-seven last school year. So, roughly, roughly speaking, the non-personnel costs of running the IB program, uh, it's about five, five-hundred dollars per student. And, one thing to keep in mind is that, you know, we don't have any real control over the, the fee structure that the IB rolls out. And in twenty-fourteen, fifteen, the registration fees were one-hundred-and-sixty dollars, it went up to one-sixty-four the next year, one-sixty-eight the year after that. Um, the subject fees, one-ten, one-thirteen, one-sixteen. So this current year, uh, the actual, and I apologize, I don't have the exact count, but I do know that the exact amount of fees is fifty-nine thousand dollars for this current year. Last year, it was sixty-one thousand. So, I would infer that enrollment, because I don't believe that they lowered their prices this year. So, uh, enrollment is probably down just a little bit there. But, the other thing to consider is that, while I, while I understand that, um, if we don't fund the, the, the price of the, the test, some students may just simply walk away, there is an opportunity cost. And right now, we have roughly six-hundred-plus juniors who won't be able to take the ACT test this year, because we, we're not funding it. That only costs thirty-two thousand dollars compared to the sixty thousand dollars. And, and I also want to put out there the work keys assessment. If, if somebody who maybe is not college-bound wants, but they definitely see themselves in a skilled trade, if they complete the work keys assessment, they can get a, a certificate at the platinum, gold, silver level that is portable. They take that to an employer here in town, and that means something. So, that's a nominal fee for that as well. But again, those are all dollars that we do have to prioritize, um, where they get applied. So I don't envy your decision-making, but just, you know, in all interest of fairness, I, I do think we have to put it out there. Uh, the other thing to think about with, in respect to IB, is just because that you take the test, if you don't score high enough, you don't really, you don't get the credit. Now, at the same time, that doesn't necessarily mean you didn't learn.
Right.
No, these are the, these are very challenging classes.
Well, agreed, agreed.
The curriculum's all written somewhere else, we don't have to have somebody do that fee, you know, so some of that is why we pay all that money.
Dr. Hubbey, uh, in regards to ACT tests and work keys, which ones would be beneficial to the school district in regards to the annual performance report and accreditation to fund?
This is a Dr. Lau.
She actually has.
But I'll stay up here, because I think I'm probably coming...
Not only to fund, but to focus on?
Right, so, um, we really, in terms of college and career readiness, um, IB is counted in one of the components of standard three, and so there's work keys and, and ACT. And one of the other tests, um, two, is of course, we have to always remember AP testing. Um, and currently, the students, um, have to pay for that on their own, and, um, that affects Benton, Central, and Lafayette. Um, so those students are responsible for those costs. The state, um, used to give us fee waivers for, um, students that qualified, um, but that is no longer in place. So we are not able to, um, help the students who qualify, uh, get a waiver for AP testing. So that's another competing factor.
Let me rephrase my question.
Mm-hmm.
If you were starting out, and to, were going to fund any one of these tests, which ones would you fund first?
Um, the one that could impact the most students is likely to be the ACT, and, um, certainly, what helps a lot of students is the work keys.
So, to summarize...
But again, they all contribute to standard three.
So kind of to summarize, there are three tests that we're not currently paying for students.
Exactly.
And one test that, and this is one that we are.
Exactly.
And should we, if we're not paying for the other three?
None of those are part of the curriculum of the class, and this one is.
AP testing, and just, I mean, just for factual information, is part of...
It's the end thing, it's a test at the end.
If you, if you were going to do this, you'd like to fund them all. The state has pulled their funding on the ACT. So, why are we funding IB when the best beneficial use of money would be to flip this and fund ACT?
At half the price, for three times the students.
Every year, we need, and we need to take the ACT.
Well, that's a good way to find out how your, um, scores are across the board.
Um...
Well, it's part of your, it's part of your APR, your annual performance report, which determines your accreditation. Where does our focus need to be? Does it need to be over here in IB that we, I mean, guys, we've got to, again, reverse this thing and regroup, and yet, we're not, you know, I get the feeling here, just the previous discussion on these last several items, that we're not recognizing that. And we've got to regroup, redesign this, refocus this, this whole, um, basic package to be more effective, to be more efficient. I hate to keep bringing those words up.
If I could bring up just one last point with regard to those assessments, um, it is important for our APR, of course, but it's most important to the students, because assessments are designed to give that student clear information as to what paths they need to take, um, for their future. Um, and that's what those, that's what that feedback is for. So, again, trying to help, um, as many of our students be able to better understand, um, the feedback from an ACT, a work keys, whatever assessment, um, that's what's most critical. So trying to help a broader, um, group of those students, um, under these types of circumstances is something to consider.
And I, I might counter your last point. I, I don't know that I necessarily see S as obstructionist to progress, but, but rather, but rather just fully, I think the discussion is rather just fully vetting out the proposed cuts.
I, I agree, Brian, but I, I, I do want to make sure you see, it's odd that we're funding IB versus not funding the others.
I was, I was counter, I was counter to one point.
Right. Dr. Newhart, I, I believe, um, your point's well-taken, but, uh, I don't think you need to get, um, the fact doesn't need to be lost that we are actually in a work, just a work session, and that's how we are gonna find out what it is that we can all come to an agreement on, is by having this discussion. I don't think there's anybody, I think there's a lot of things here that people are passionate about, one maybe more than another, but I think, uh, we all should have the opportunity to get it out in the open how they feel. I, I don't think there's anybody, uh, looking for any kind of sword to die on here. We, we just want to make sure that we're all, everybody understands how each one feels before we make these decisions here, so...
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, before we move on, I'll just jump in here and let Dr. Newhart and the staff, that this was, this was very well done, and this is a lot of data work, and it's painful, and we all know, but let me tell you, you did an excellent job with these recommendations. I don't agree with all of them, and I, you know, I'm a pain in the butt, let's face it, but I can tell you, this was done, I've, I've, I've had to do this before, and I'm gonna tell you, you guys have done a great job, and I want to thank you for that.
One more question.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so one more question, then, going back to a need base, if we're, if we don't want to fund this one fully, and we have these other opportunities, do we need to put in place criteria where we're helping those that can't afford to do it, but those that are able to do it, being able to, to pay that, that fee?
Should make it means-based.
Means-based, yeah.
That's impressive, yeah. Because I think that there are, because, um, when my child went through high school, I paid for her ACT. Um, the state has only paid for the ACT, what, one, one year, two years?
One year.
Three?
Oh, three.
Time flies for me anymore. Um, so, and then they just, they've decided that they, they're gonna take that away. So I think maybe in that reorganization, then maybe we need to look at that, and there, we have sixty-five percent of our kids on free and reduced lunches, seventy percent of our children fall into a subcategory when it comes to the MAP. That is huge. So maybe we need to look at these things, and we, we need to, if there's a way that we can help those that cannot afford it, we need to. And the other ones, then I think that they should step up to the plate and do it.
And board members, I, I believe everything is on the table to, so, let's get through this list, and then, well, the thing is, is that everything's on the table, means-based, whatever, as Dr. Kraus has already mentioned that two or three times tonight. We need to get through this list, and then we can go from here and decide, so, say you have a passion for something, and you, and you find a way to make that work, then we'll bring that back. Same with Dr. Green and everyone else. But we still have a couple of things here we need to get done, so we can move forward.
I was thinking, as we got toward the bottom, they'd get easier, but I was wrong, I guess. The extra periods line, uh, we have a, a number of staff people, I think it's either seven or eight, who teach a class in lieu, an additional class in lieu of having a planning period. And so depending on the number of hours in their day, they're either getting one-seventh or one-eighth of their total salary extra to teach that class. Uh, we feel like with the restructuring that, that, um, is gonna happen, hopefully, or, well, it's, there's gonna have to be some sort of restructuring, that when that happens, we, those could be eliminated so that everybody would have just the, the typical number, um...
So if you go to seven periods, that'll take care of that, right?
Yes, well, I mean, teachers would still have the option, if it were given to them, to say, yeah, I'll teach during my planning period, but I'm saying we would eliminate that.
Okay.
Questions on that line? Um, Empower U, twenty-five thousand, that's a fee that we pay to use their facilities. Obviously, it's a, a very nice facility, and we... Obviously, it's a very nice facility and we use it a lot, but we could look for other places to hold meetings and trainings and those sorts of things.
So are you thinking with the sixth grade going here, is that something separate?
I'm going to need help, Dr. Norman.
Because I sort of thought that that was the sixth grade program. That is the sixth grade.
We used to pay two $25,000 payments. We eliminated one of those a year and a half ago.
Right.
This is the other.
Right. This is the other one, and it's actually, last year's cost was a little over $28,000. So it's one of those items that's on the table because we're looking at everything.
I just wanted to clarify.
It is a whole program.
It is the whole program. Yes. And actually, that's, that fee there is just for the sixth, is the sixth grade program fee.
Thank you.
Anything else on that? And then the last one we've basically have touched on already, if you were to eliminate middle school sports, was that what the premise of that last one is, that the remaining activities that have a paid sponsor would have a pay to participate fee. And again, we determined there's really three options, leave them alone, eliminate, or charge a participation fee. So that brings us to the end of the list. And again, we're looking basically at either $7 million or eight and a half, depending on what you opt to do with step or no step. So you have either $950,000 or $2,400,000, basically, that's in the list there that would not have to be done or could be modified in some way. Any other questions at this point? I know we'll have continuing discussion in executive session.
The high school elimination of the block schedule equated to how many FTEs?
Ladies and gentlemen, it's $24,000.
What is the, excuse me, what is the overall consensus on the block schedule?
I think the majority believe we should do away with it.
So we can begin to, a week's time makes a difference.
I know it does.
And having that knowledge will bring, obviously, that back for formal approval, but we can move towards that beginning tomorrow or next week then, knowing that that's basic consensus.
Okay. Well, that being said, I just briefly wanted to comment, you know, a lot of people spent a lot of time working on this. I appreciate what you said, Mr. Snead. And there were dozens of people who contributed, did a lot of work with this. I want to thank all of the guest speakers tonight who came and bailed me out when I didn't know the answers. The last point I want to leave you with is regardless of what happens here, kids are still going to come to school. Our teachers are still going to work their butts off to teach them as best they can. We'll get through this. You know, it's going to be, there's going to be some pain involved, but teaching and learning is still going to happen, so thank you for what you guys do.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
There's a couple areas that I'd like to ask the Board to consider, if we can develop a consensus, maybe to ask the administration to come up with some additional figures. One would be on the buildings that we own that we do not use for education. This building is an example. I have no preconceived ideas of savings or anything, but there's several buildings that I think we should consider, all the buildings that we own, and see if there's opportunities to reduce them, sell them, and some cost savings there. And the other area that I'm really curious about, I know that in the plan, in the book here, that scenario A was those four schools that were mentioned. And what I see up there, if I understand, closing two schools will save us $4 million. And the ones I'm curious about, we have Gene Field, Coleman, and Oak Grove. And the figures in this book, if I'm understanding them correct, I may not be, but if I'm understanding them correct, they have a total student capacity of around 1,750 students. That's what I'm seeing in the chart here. And those three schools together have about 1,200 students. And so that makes me wonder, is there an opportunity to look at those three schools and condense those down to maybe two schools or maybe even one school? And what savings would we have if we can do that?
Combine Coleman, Field, and Oak Grove?
I think, look at those.
Coleman has three classrooms per grade.
Yeah, but bottom line though, Cappy, bottom line, they have, let's see, Coleman, Coleman has 398 students and they have a capacity of 564, according to this book.
Do you want to add another one?
But you take those three, those three together has a total capacity of over 1,700 students. And we have 1,200 going to those three schools. So I'm not suggesting what should be closed, but I'm just suggesting that we ask the administration to take a look at that and see if there's opportunity up there. Because if we can save, if we can save $4 million to close two schools, how much can we save if we do some consolidation up there?
Well, the thing of it is, is that you also have to take into consideration all the specials, many, which is like your special ed classes, because Coleman has, they have a high, how many different languages do they have that are spoken there? I mean, that's highly...
Yeah, Coleman is.
Coleman is, so there's a lot of diversity there. So I think that you have to take all of that into consideration, and that's what the BLBD plan did, is that they took all of those things into consideration when they were looking at it.
Just to piggyback on there, I know a little bit about the South Side schools, and I know Lake Contraire structurally is 100 times better than Hyde. That building was built during the Depression and can't listen to a radio on the third floor. But Lake's a newer school. Now, Lake's crossed tracks down there in Pertle, but there's a lot of flood planning in this town. That's a great school, it's in good shape. It's, the building's in better shape than they wanted in Hyde, but I don't want to close Hyde or Lake Contraire, to be honest with you. And I really don't want to, the closing of the schools is a very, very touchy area in this town. Yeah, we probably need to do it. But we got a new board coming in, maybe a new superintendent, and, you know, that's something they should address. We should not hurry to close schools at this point, in my opinion.
The thing of it is, is that with even all of that, we are still a working board, and we can't continue to kick the can down the road. We need to take the opportunities when they're presented to us. This is an opportunity. We need to take advantage. Dennis, from now on, there's going to be an election every single year. We can't stop doing our work because there's going to be two or three people coming in in April every year now. So we just can't stop work to wait for that because then we're going to be wasting a whole lot of time, and we don't have the time to do that. So again, this is an opportunity, but we need to do our jobs and we need to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for our district and our kids and this community.
I think Larry makes a good point. I mean, we're talking about closing schools, and then we got a new school, Oak Grove, and I think some of those kids from Coleman and those schools, Gene Field, most of them moved over there. That's why you got a shortage of people.
Yeah, well, Oak Grove.
It always seems to me that the poor kids are the ones we talk about closing schools. Always going to be Humboldt, it's going to be Edison, Lake Contraire, you know? No, we got to consider all of the options, and I think you got a valid point there.
Oak Grove has a capacity of 650, this is according to the book that we got tonight. And we have 443 students out there, so we're under utilizing that building. And I know, I know, I know there's other activities going on out there.
We have preschool out there. Yeah, we have preschool out there also. See, those are just K-8s, that's what you're seeing. You're not seeing the preschool.
Okay. There's a, there's a whole...
Is there consensus to immediately take this to view a 12 elementary plan?
Yes.
With the task of the St. Joe One Vision Task Force and trying to get something resolved by the January 22 meeting?
I understand that that is what that happened, because we are...
I don't disagree with that, but...
I mean, we have had a plan in place for a very long time, and anybody that knows about it, I mean, they're in consensus that yes, this is where we need to get, so I think we're really already there.
Well, basically, what you're, what I'm hearing anyway, is what closing two buildings would look like, what closing three buildings would look like, or what closing four buildings would look like.
Well, and Larry was talking about some of the buildings that aren't used for teaching.
I understand.
Could they potentially be combined somehow?
Right. And then those vacant buildings, I mean, you know, Coleman's under contract right now. Noah is, obviously, either sell it or do something with it. You've got this building, Keatley, you know, there's the maintenance building, there's, you know, some of these buildings and locations that we have, can you consolidate those down, basically?
Exactly.
Okay. If we've got consensus here to move towards the planning and recommendations, the bottom line, we don't want our work to go for naught and not ultimately have, you know, some hard decisions made. If you're not willing to make those hard decisions, least with closing of two buildings. We don't know how else you're going to get a significant reduction done unless you close some buildings.
And closing is part of the plan.
It is.
That's been out there since 2012 or before. I would think we would, I'd be very leery to think that by this time for next school year, we could do more than, take on more than closing two schools.
I think that would be at the max that we could do this quickly.
And at the same time that we're looking at closing elementaries and going to 12, I want us to be also looking at moving our sixth grade to the middle schools.
And this could be a perfect opportunity in which to do...
Perfect opportunity.
For Rivadue and Spring Garden, because there's the room there for those kids that are sixth graders in those buildings to move them to the middle school, which is the next, was the next step in our long-term plan, was getting sixth grade to the middle school level.
And you realize that this would require modulators?
Yes.
Yep.
And there is consensus to move towards this and bring back to you by January 22. Can't turn this around by the 11. But we have a majority of the information, it's now is the actual logistics of making a closure.
So you're just asking about the schools and the block schedule? Not that one at all, just the schools?
I'm talking about going to a 12-4 model.
So...
A 14-4 minimally to a 12-4.
So you're asking us for consensus on closing the two schools that were mentioned tonight and proceeding forward with conversations to move towards the 12-4?
Close two one.
Yeah.
Over...
I mean, I think that requires, that's going to require a lot more conversation community-wide.
Yeah.
For the specifics of that.
But reenacting the facilities committee to do that, is that what you're talking about?
To get to 12?
To get to...
You could get to 12 by July 1.
That would require redistricting.
That's going to require a lot more, that's going to require a lot more conversation, but you're right.
I think that what they're proposing is these two in particular, they're smaller groups of kids, so they're going to be easily absorbed into the others. If we look at having Rivadue and Spring Garden absorb sixth graders from those two areas, then you're going to have the room, there's going to be less modulators that you have to purchase. I hate modulators, I really do, but I think that if you strategically put those modulators where in the plan that we already have, they're saying that when Lake closed, these, we were going to have an addition on at Hosea. You put those modulators already there, so when we finally get to make that addition, those kids won't have to be redistrict again. We do not want to have to continually redistrict and to move kids because that disrupts a lot. So if we can do this in a way that is as least distressful to kids, it's the best thing for everybody.
Well, our conversation isn't about the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The conversation is about closing two elementary schools.
Well, no, he opened it up to the 12-4 plan.
To get to a 12 elementary would require a movement of the sixth, seventh, and eighth, four middle school model.
And I would again caution, maybe two schools for next year, that's pretty ambitious to think, maybe I should be more ambitious.
We're not talking about closing four schools.
Well, we should. Right. No, but he said we could do that by July 1. And so I'm saying I wouldn't want to do that by July 1, in my own personal opinion.
I'm not for that, that's too much, too fast.
Yeah.
You, this is not, this is not something that you just do because it's in the book. You gotta, but you have to include the community in that. You talk about the community needs to know, make up their mind what they want to look like, well, you got to give them an opportunity to make up their mind what they want to look like.
Mr. President?
You have to shove that down the throat.
I mean, I'm, I'm new here compared to all this, but did this have community input?
Yes.
And so the community has seen this, and the community has had input to it, and this has scenarios in here. These scenarios are kind of what we're talking about tonight, where scenario one is cutting from 16 down to 12, right? And this, so...
There was three, almost three years of community engagement.
And I think the community has spoken to us pretty strongly that they don't like the fact that we haven't, that we're not doing the right things. And the community has been, had input on this. I'm not sure why we shouldn't, I know we can't close four schools at one time, but I'm not sure why we can't not go on record and say, this is our blueprint, let's move forward with it.
I understand that, Mr. Coleman, and that is a blueprint. But what I'm saying is, right now, you're, there's a difference between having that plan and implementing it. So now that you're going to implement it, you can't go too fast, because if you do, you're going to get fried.
Well, we've been fried already.
I've been fried a lot, I understand that, so I can stand a little more frying. But here's the deal, you said yourself, I'm new on the board, has the community seen this plan? How come you haven't seen it?
Well, like Dr....
Now, hold on, that's the point I'm making. That's the point I'm making.
I have seen the plan.
Okay. But there's some that haven't looked at it like you've looked at it and like I've looked at it. And so you can't push it all down at one time, but you can go slow and make it happen. That's where I'm at. I'm just saying, let's not try and do everything overnight here.
And I would agree with that. I mean, it's a blueprint, and blueprints, it's on paper, and it's going to change over time as, as you go through the process. It wasn't put in cement.
So going back to what you said, I think the consensus here is we're looking at closing two schools for next year, and should you in January enact a facilities committee or whatever from One Vision or PACT or whatever it would be to start looking at those other two in the near future? And I would say yes.
I would say yes.
I would say yes.
Okay.
Well, in the past, we've had the grounds and facilities group. You've had a facilities group that was working for what I promised you.
Yeah, we had readings weekly, and that's how the updated BLBD document came to fruition. And everybody's gone, everybody was on consensus and gung ho, just like you are, to the 12-4 model. The holdup is what to do with the high schools. And that really, that's where I see that you go ahead and make the move to the 12-4 model.
In the process to the whatever we do at high school.
And then that, that high school becomes that further discussion that has to happen.
And that's going to be the toughest discussion.
Yes.
Understand, I mean, that's going to be the toughest discussion, but it's got to be a part of the discussion.
I'm all, I'm all for the, for the discussion, bring us open. My only point is, to start the discussion, this may be the starting point of the discussion.
There you go.
I know we can't move too fast.
There you go.
But I think, I think we need to tell the public that we're closing two schools right now, we're going to take a hard look at this, and we're going to see if it fits as we move forward. That we're just not going to close two schools and stop.
We can't stop.
Mr. Snead?
Just for the record, I remember when we had these meetings, facility, or public was invited, but the former administration made a lot of those teachers show up at those meetings. There was, there was more staff at those meetings than there was people.
But a staff or people, too?
I went to a couple. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, there was a lot of teachers and administrators at those meetings. I would like to...
There should be staff.
It was probably, it was probably nine to one, as far as the people in the south there, because I went.
I don't think they should be made to attend. I don't think they should be made to attend.
Well, I think they were, they were encouraged to attend, because they wouldn't, they came of any other reason.
If I could check with the administration.
We had people that didn't even live in St. Joe.
Is there anything we've missed for direction?
What's the process going to be for the...
So, so kind of salary, salary...
You got a freeze on, possible freeze on salary.
Is there any...
Okay.
It's really difficult.
A week.
Two weeks.
Okay, I'm, I'll start that, I guess, and I'm going to shock a whole lot of people. I can imagine what Facebook is going to look like tomorrow with my name in it, but I'm, a lot of the people in this room are going to understand what I'm saying, because you live the life of an educator. And for almost 30 years, I have fought, fought, almost given blood to not freezing salary schedules, because it's just not that next year you don't have, you know, that step increase or that wage increase, it's, it affects you the rest of your career and even your retirement. And when you can't even retire, when it's based on however many years, you know, your three years of highest salary or whatever. So, you know, I see that we can make a lot of adjustments, I don't want to use the word cuts, but adjustments, nine million of them, and I know there's more than just this out there, this is just the, what I consider, I'm pretty sure is the shortlist, but it's the big list, big shortlist, whatever, and there's nine million there, and Dr. Kraus says 8.5 million if we choose not to freeze, and so I most definitely will never vote to freeze salaries.
Well, one way to, one thing I think we can, we need to look at, I know there's two sides to every argument, there's two sides for that particular argument, too, but part of the mantra that's going on throughout all the debates for cuts and whatever reductions is, we want to make sure our staff is paid correctly. And so you got to weigh whether or not you think they're being paid correctly to freeze their salary, because if you freeze the salary, then they're going backwards again. We just got ourselves to the point where we're going forward with the salaries, okay? And so, I mean, that's, that's one school of thought, but here's the other school of thought on that, is that if you're having, if you're having financial difficulties and you need to cut your budget, how do you give people a raise? So you have to weigh, you have to weigh that for yourself on how you, where you land on that, because you're going to have people on both sides of that particular pendulum there.
And I would just add one more thing, and then I'm going to sit back and let others talk, but as we go through this list, we've eliminated some salary places, you know, some salary going to people with department chairs and, I mean, we haven't limited anything yet. The discussion is open, and it's going to hit people salary-wise, it's going to hit them, there's lots of salary issues here where people are going to make less money because of extracurricular or whatever that they've done that's being cut on top of than if we would freeze salaries, so. And that doesn't hit everybody, but it's going to hit some staff.
This is how I see it. I don't love freezing anyone's salary, but if we were to do it, I think that we would need to give back that when funding is restored. So if we go a year and nobody gets a step, then when the funding is restored, that they get the two steps.
But the problem with that is this, so if we freeze the salaries for two years, and then in year three, we're able to give them a step, or we're going to give them three steps?
Exactly.
Or we're going to give them, well, the thing is, is once you lose that money, you don't ever make it back up, isn't that correct? Wouldn't you say that?
Yeah.
But I'm just, this is a conversation that we need to have, and need to understand it all. I know we gave back to them before, but we didn't give them three years.
But not everybody got back those steps.
And then everybody did not get back those steps.
And here's the thing, three years from now, the salary should be at a certain level, and we're going to be three years behind in salary.
Three years behind.
And then think that a step is going to retain us some quality people, and I'm not just talking teachers, I'm talking all staff.
Well, but then also, it's not just, it's, what I'm talking about is, we're going to be losing staff, like you're saying, maybe again because of the inequity in the salaries, and since our public will be distressed again because we're not taking care of our teachers or staff.
If we were to do a freeze, we could keep all these other things, not have to lose curriculum coordinators or department chairs, and, and so it's, it's kind of, you know, they're sort of the same thing in a different way, and one you can restore when the, when the funding is back.
Salary schedules touches everybody, these certain things only touch so many people. Like 16 people are just touched by the curriculum.
It does affect the programs, the teaching programs of the students.
The thing is, is that what we always want to do is to attract and retain the highest quality staff. The quickest way to have those people go out the door and go south of here is to freeze their salaries. That's God's honest truth.
Okay, okay, we can debate this all night. Doctor, did you want to say something, Dr. Green? If not, I'm going to move on here.
Well, one of the values that we've, that has been expressed tonight is each, each line item that's eliminated from the budget allows for a greater number of staff to be employed, which, which equates to class sizes, so, you know, I think part of the discussion is if you, and I guess one question I have, again, as an outsider in the educational world, there's not, there's not an option for a half step, I guess, or is there?
No.
So it's either step or no step?
No. That's not really an option, that just kind of puts us, keeps us in this, it's either do or don't.
He's just getting worse, heart attack.
Okay. Dr. Newhart, I have a question here. What, what do you need, what do you need now on this?
I think I've got a decent idea, I've got three that would say no freeze, and two that say freeze, and I see you and Martin, you and Brian as babies.
That's pretty much, I mean, I haven't landed on either side, because I see both sides. I understand, I was a union member for 40 years, so I know.
What, what the, we need a decision December 11th, because that allows us then to enter negotiations, we've got negotiations occurring, we've got, you know, contracts, we've got to get all this other rolling, that if we sit here and wait on this decision, it backs everything up.
Let's do December 11th. So my, my comment to the board is this, on December 11th, we'll make a decision as a board on whether or not to freeze the salaries. Now, between now and December 11th, everybody at this table is going to be lobbied really hard not to freeze the salaries, or some are going to freeze the salaries thinking that, because one, another way to look at it is, I'd rather for you to freeze my salary than cut a job, okay? So that, I mean, there's a lot of scenarios here. What I'm asking you to do, and I'm encouraging you to do, is you're going to be lobbied hard, but you got to make sure we look at the data that we have and make what you feel is your best, most intelligent decision. We can't let, we can't totally let emotions get involved in this, because this is, this has to be a business decision for the district. And that's all I got to say on this, and let's move forward.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Yes, sir.
If I understand your charge here correctly, the 9.332, that is, that is, that has nothing to do with the salary steps, the salary steps are at the bottom. So if we, if we froze a salary, our total reduction would be 10 million, 800 and some thousand?
No, that, that 9.332 is on a new sheet, that's the total of all those things that are listed there. And I'm saying that out of that 9.332, if you freeze salaries, you only need to cut seven million only, and if you give step, then you'd need to cut eight, eight and a half.
Or we could still make these cuts, not freeze, and be in a better place.
That does not have this, this... That does not have the raise. So what he's telling you is, we got to cut seven million or whatever, but you have to balance.
Okay.
If you want to get raises, you got to cut eight and a half.
Right.
And we're giving you 9.3 million dollars to pay.
So if we cut that, if they cut that out, we can, we can do this?
All right. If you cut to this, if you make some cuts, the eight and a half million here, you can get raises.
Okay. You got that, Mr. Colgan?
Yeah.
You understand that now? Okay, Ms. Sneeden, Ms. Sneeden?
I've got a request here, I'm, I'm going to be out of town, and I get back on the 11th at five, I'm supposed to be at the airport at five, at Kansas City, and I'm heading straight up here. Could we not vote on any of this till about six, or six-thirty, in case I can't make it? Well, just do your other business first.
No, we don't, we're pretty consistent with our 5:30, but I think that you're right, we can do that.
There's other items on the agenda.
You got to do the other items first.
We can fix it, so...
Yeah, do the audit first.
You don't want to...
Mr. Sneeden, if you promised to come straight to the board meeting, we'll hold it up for you. Okay, Dr. Green?
We've, tonight, we've discussed a lot of really, really painful cuts. Have we ruled out discussion of any possibility of a revenue initiative on, in April ballot?
I don't, I have not ruled it out, I don't think anybody else has ruled it out, it's just that it's not part of the discussion tonight.
Agreed.
Yeah, we still have those committee meetings, committee two and all.
Correct me, Dr. Newhart, we have until like the end of January to put that, make that decision, isn't that correct?
Correct.
So we've got time to make that decision, Dr. Green.
I think it was important that we have this discussion first, and then we can decide whether or not we can go forward with it. We have options.
Okay, one last question. At the next board meeting, Dr. Newhart, what's the process of getting to the 8.5 million or the 7 million?
In talking with Dr. Williams and Dr. Kraus and Wes, we believe it'd be best suited in packages. In other words, here's a package, here's a package, and...
Who's going to give the package? Me? Or we're going to give our own package, or are you going to?
Based off what we're hearing tonight.
I mean, we may have to discuss that, we may have to put packages together as a collect...
We'll, we'll, we'll bring, like...
It's doable, people.
Three packages, okay? They'll be your Christmas present.
Well, what if we all, like Dennis suggested, that you give us these options, we start tallying, and in that way, that gives you an idea of maybe what to put?
We can give you that sheet, or you could just take the sheet.
Take the sheet that you have and tally up and do...
And just rank them.
And do your...
Not tonight on the spot.
No, but, and then provide them to Cassie or Donna.
Maybe we can make that happen by Monday or something, or such.
Yeah, I would say we need that by, see, with the book package to be out, and the agenda Wednesday next week, we, we would need that by no later than Tuesday noon.
I think that's doable. Is that over?
That we each do our own.
That we're going to do a tally sheet of each one of these, and then they'll put different scenarios together for what we do tally anyways?
Would you make all of this, you'd like these items?
That's what he's telling me.
The way we want to, and then they would put together lists and we'll...
Sounds familiar, Dr. Kraus?
Okay, is everybody on this, is everyone on the same page on this?
We've done this before in United SJSD.
Okay, all right.
Do you want us to email you out a form?
That would be wonderful.
We'll email you out a form that has these items listed, you get it turned around, we'll have the directions by Tuesday noon.
Okay, all right. Who we have, audit committee? Oh my gosh. Okay, in light of the fact that we've taken all night on what we're doing.
It's okay, it's important.
Let's take a about five-minute break for the bathrooms.
I mean...
Okay, the last three items won't take very long, so make that five-minute break, five minutes. Let's go.
He's going to take a break.
It could take one more minute, that's happy. It could take one more minute. That's how you get it.
Okay, okay. We need to, yeah, we need to look at the prognosis. Absolutely. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
My name's Zach.
Yeah, Zach.
I'm Ash Janssen.
Yeah, Frank Green.
While they're on, five minutes, I think, they're going to say hello.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we've met, said hi before, but not really, phone numbers. I, I appreciate your work on the...
Thanks.
I think it's been very important for some of you.
Great.
It is, it is. It's, it's a hot button issue, and we made it, for sure. So we appreciate your accuracy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I wanted, I thought maybe...
We're going to have two.
One's going to be down there, one's going to be...
It'll be in the paper.
There's Tammy.
Appreciate you.
Hey, how you doing?
Yes. Mr. Cummings from KPM, our auditor, will be here on the 11th to do the audit review with the board. We're going to have the audit committee come in at 4 o'clock and meet with them. So far, I've sent an email out to all seven. Four of them have replied. I'm assuming I'll hear back from them. I'm going to try to get the audit out to them Wednesday next week or Thursday at the latest, so they can review it over the weekend and, and send me questions or have questions prepared for when John is here at 4 o'clock. And then John will go over it with them for an hour or so before the board meeting, and then hopefully, first thing, he'll present it to the board.
And from a procedural standpoint, because of requirement to submit to DESI, there has to be board action to approve that audit on the 11th.
11th, yes. So it'll be an info action item on the 11th. Budget book.
Mr. Wes?
It's done. I presented it with a copy, I present you guys all with a copy of it. I do have a limited number in the business office. We did post it on the finance page on our website under the budget documents. So if somebody wants to look at it, they can go out there and look at it also, or they can come into the business office and look at it also. My staff worked really hard on this.
It looks, it looks really good.
Yeah, I like it. It's really nice. We put the three high schools on the front cover this year, so I thought it looked pretty sharp.
Okay. And the board election committee update?
We have met several times, have had some great discussion. And basically, we'll be meeting with several small groups. Actually, it begins tomorrow morning, as a reminder, at 7:30 a.m. And basically, it is a consensus of this committee that depending on the group, that we have adjustable people or different people lead those meetings.
Mm-hmm.
And trying to have productive meetings with anybody that we do meet, okay? We, we, we know, and I want to make sure the board knows, that there is no authorization given to this committee, except to come back to the board and provide to you their findings, okay? And that's all we're trying to do.
Okay.
Can I explain that just a little bit? You know, when you deal with people that is knowing your... So I think this will be the best way to go about doing that.
All right, thank you. Next order.
Thank you. I forgot about that.
What? Well, that must be the buttons you didn't push.
Also, one quick reminder before we get done. You're going to need to take your laptops to the conference room, okay? So, so don't shut down. Just take them, use your battery backup power to utilize them.
No batteries?
No, we're in the new conference room.
Okay. All right. Next order of business would be, what? That's it.
Please list those meeting dates. We also need one clarification. December 18th, with the search committee, the SEC, you're not necessarily looking to have a board meeting that night. They're just providing you the results of the focus groups to you via some email or communication. You're not...
You don't have to assemble. You don't need us to assemble somewhere? We're just getting emails?
Well, that's my question. There's confusing, confusion in our office.
Well, what discipline does that connect? I thought that we were actually having a physical meeting.
I did, too.
To go over all of the findings, and then they were going to give...
What date? What's the date?
Monday, December 18th.
And then they were going to give us the feedback, and that we were going to, that they were building the profile.
Well, that, that, I believe then Lori or Larry, or I think you need to get with them and get that clarified.
Yeah, because I have meeting.
I do, too, but if there's not, I'm curious.
Great. That's Christmas tree.
Yeah, I have a meeting.
I have a meeting, too.
I'll, I'll contact them.
Okay, are there any more questions? No? Next order of business will be future meetings and events. December 11th, board meeting. December, possibly December 18th. December 20th, end of the quarter. December 22nd, Christmas break. January 8th, professional development and executive session meeting. And SEC candidates, June, January 15th, the holiday, Dr. Martin Luther King holiday. And January 22nd, special board meeting. Govern yourself accordingly. Now I need a motion to move to executive session.
I'd make a motion to move to executive session pursuant to 610.021, closed meetings and closed records for 1, 2, 3, 13, and 14.
First and second, to move to executive session.
Yes, Brian, Kathy, yes, Dennis?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming tonight and participating.